Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of Thursday, February 16, 2023. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash, Tongva, Fernandino, Tatabium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. And with that, I'll have Nicole Drabek come up and do the flag salute for us.
Okay, can everybody stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drabek. With that, we will go to a roll call. Ms. Kitario, if you could take roll call at this time.
Member Tabit.
Present.
Member Ponser Kamkar.
Present.
Clerk Agakanyan.
Present.
Vice President Weisberg.
Present.
President Ferguson.
Present. We have, all five members are present, so we do have a quorum and we're able to proceed with the business of the meeting tonight. Reporting out on closed session items, the board did act on an item in closed session. The Board of Education met in closed session, voted to approve the notice of intent to suspend and proposed statement of charges for employee, and the proposed statement of charges for employee number CL 0117-23. That was moved by myself, Mr. Ferguson, and seconded by Dr. Weisberg, and that motion carried 5 to 0. There are no other items we need to report out on for closed session, and so we will move to item six, adjustments to the agenda. We've received a request from a few members of the audience who are requesting to speak on non-agenda items which would carry the public comment to the end, so I will move that we consolidate those public comment periods so that way we can take all cards at once. So if you, with the consent of my colleagues, if that's okay, great. So if you are, if you could help us out in this meeting, we see a number of people coming out today, please fill out your cards as soon as possible and turn them in so that way we can work and get everybody through this and get you all home. So, thank you so much, and we will do that and consolidate the two periods of public comment. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to item seven, items for future agendas, requests from my colleagues. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports from the board, student representatives. We are happy to have Mr. Ever Huerta from John Burrows High School. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, board members, Superintendent Hill, amazing district staff, and Burbank community here and at home watching. I'm so excited to finally be back with all of you today to this meeting to discuss all the amazing things that have been going on here at Burrows. On February 2nd, we had our second annual pep rally of the year, which the theme was neon. Each grade level was assigned their color, and we're excited to say that we had amazing participation and student body, as this was the first time at Burrows, we did an optional pep rally, which had the option of the students who didn't want to attend to be given the opportunity to have extended nutrition, and those students who'd wanted to come came to our pep rally, and even better, our pep rally was right on time and we ended with spare time, so the students who went to the pep rally also got an extended nutrition. As well, in ASB, in the month of love and friendship, as we are celebrating all today, we sold our Valentine's Day grams, which included various packages, and this year we had over 150 orders. We received our best selling package included a stuffed animal, roses, a message, and candy, which was a blow pop, any ring pop. So, a big thank you to the Enchanted Florist, which is a local business here in Burbank, that we were happy to support and we were happy to do business with the roses. As well, our Link Crew had their annual fundraiser. Machomatics is where they sent out a survey where students and staff can participate, and the results that are returned, so for students, they pay a dollar for the result, and the result they see is the people who they are most compatible with on campus, and it's actually really cool. I got mine, and it was pretty fun, and you get some pretty interesting facts about your horoscope, and it's honestly, I don't, it's pretty cool, so. And as well, our staff also gets to participate, so staff gets to see who they're most compatible with within themselves. It pretty is, I got a JFK quote on mine, so I'm pretty happy about that. As well, Link Crew was able to do their, also an annual thing with their freshmen, which is called Palentine's, is during lunch, they get together with their group, and they, the Link Crew leaders bring snacks, treats, and it's a time where they get to discuss, see how they're doing within the year, where they need support, and just to catch up on everything, and it was a good turnout on the freshmen, and it was really happy to see all our Link Crew leaders engaging and participating in all that. ASB has also been busy with our fundraiser of Light the Night for the Leukemial Lymphoma Society, where the most fundraiser class will be having a pizza party as their prize, so we're highly encouraging and participating and asking our students to participate and donate when they can for their fourth period. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to one of our hardworking committees this semester, our student faculty commissioners, who have been busy these past weeks celebrating our amazing teachers and counselors. So, in ASB, we do these things called teacher buddies, and each ASB member is paired up to either two or three teachers, and the responsibility of the ASB member is to get to know your teacher buddy, connect with them, share all the important information that ASB is doing, and as well, we do these little teacher buddy grams, and our student faculty representatives and commissioners, they organize little care packages for our teachers, so it had coffee packets, fancy gel pens, which I was jealous because I wanted one, and a little note that the ASB member wrote for their teacher buddy, just of encouragement, of saying like, "Thank you for all you do here at Burrows," and, you know, making it personal, I had three teachers this semester, and I'm really glad because I'm getting to know more of our staff members at Burrows that we typically don't see, and we also get to engage with them and have that participation within ASB. Moving on into the exciting senior news, here at Burrows, there are 98 days until graduation, which is crazy to think about. And another shout out to an amazing group on campus are our college peer mentors, who have been helping out our seniors. For those who don't know, FAFSA is now a graduate requirement here in the state of California, and it really sucks if you're on the off-grad list, if you haven't completed FAFSA, or a substitute form, or an opt-out form for that. So our college peer mentors have been busy going around campus, checking in with their seniors that haven't filled out FAFSA, because we want to make sure that every student gets the possibility of walking onstage in May, because it's only 98 days away, crazy to think about. Today, they had a workshop on FAFSA, and they helped students navigate and tell them how to do this, and we're really happy to have this amazing group on campus to be able to support our seniors. As well, our grad night tickets for California Adventure have been on sale since the beginning of the month. The last day to purchase them is the 24th of February, and it's also really cool because the students from Monterey High School can buy tickets from their home school, so they can as well participate in these activities. So we're really excited to see all the seniors finally talking about and getting all these things ready. Our senior class as well has been busy planning our prom, which I'm excited to share the location, which will be the Odyssey in the Granada Hills, so it's a really pretty venue, so we can't wait and to see also all the festivities, and hopefully by next meeting, I will be able to share the theme with you guys. This week also begins the opportunities for our seniors to start nominating and voting for people for our prom court, so seniors are getting ready and fired up to campaign for their spot on prom court. As well, we are, in moving into the world of sports, we are happy and proud to announce that the regular season ending of our boys' and girls' basketball teams and soccer teams have ended. As well, I would like to congratulate the boys' and girls' basketball team on taking the W against Burbank High. It was a really intense match, my stress levels definitely felt it. Mr. Cantwell, it was nice seeing you at the game, supporting our troops. I know you guys were here at a fun board meeting. I was jealous that I wasn't there with you guys, but good congrats to them, as well as congratulations to the girls' soccer team, who also won, and we also would like to congratulate Burbank High again on fighting a high battle, tense match. I was definitely biting my nails the entirety of it, so thank you Burbank High on that. Now, we wish the best of luck, best of luck to all our spring sports that are starting today their season, which includes softball, baseball, volleyball, track and field, and tennis, which today, they all started their season, and I actually got news before the meeting that our softball girls did win their first match of the season, so we're excited to hear that from them. We also want to congratulate our amazing drama program, who put an amazing show of rent. It was a beautiful performance, I had the opportunity of attending on Sunday, and it was, I'm not a big musical person, but I definitely love seeing the hard work that they put in into these productions, and especially the staff that they have and support, and especially tech crew, who were able to make the lighting, the sound, and all of that possible, so a big congratulations to them. Our VMA is also getting ready for their annual pop show, which will have, which you will all have the chance to see on February 24th and 25th at 7:00 PM, and if you can't make it, the last show will be February 26 at 2:00 PM. Lastly, we also had yesterday our CTE Day, which was such an amazing opportunity to see, for students to see the various colleges, and, you know, students who don't know what they want to go into, such as the National Guard, and as well, just the different works and trades and entrepreneurships that they have. I got to hang out with the carpenters for the day, which was pretty fun, and then as well, the city of Burbank, who also has their own programs, such as seeing the plumbers, the electricians, it's such an amazing opportunity, and many students don't know that they have those types of things, especially here in Burbank, so it's amazing to see that exposure and students taking interest in that. And then lastly, to end off my report, I'd like to give a huge shout out to our amazing yearbook staff, who have been working super duper hard this year, getting all their events, meeting all their deadlines, and definitely have been stressed with all the crazy things, as if it isn't one thing, it's another thing, and they're running all over the place, so I'd like to give them props to all that, and they, students have the opportunity from the beginning of the school year to preorder yearbooks, the last day to preorder is March 1st, so if you are a parent and are watching, and you have a student at Burrows, buy your yearbook, thank you. That is it for all my report. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to items, item number nine, which is requests to address the board, so again, just a reminder, if you haven't turned in a card, please do so so we can get through, look at this, more coming in, appreciate you, and we're going to get started. So, just, everybody will have five minutes to speak once they are called, it's, you know, a five-minute thing, there is not a back and forth conversation, so we will respond at the end. After everybody has concluded their comments, the board and staff will respond to you, so if we're not responding in that moment, you know exactly what's happening there, we're waiting. And then, again, not a back and forth, so just, again, we want to create a safe environment for everybody to communicate what they need to, and following those rules helps us do that, so, thank you very much, and with that, we will begin with Mr. Schlossman.
Good evening, everybody.
Great.
Mr. Ferguson, you violated our rights tonight, you wiffle-waffled, you did it last week, shame on you, it's a Brown Act violation. Get your act together, as a new president, you should set a good example, and, you know, if I ask you to change the agenda around, you won't do it for me, I'm sure, but if your friends and your employees show up, you do it for them, and it's got to be a level playing field, and you're, it's just a poor example. Now, Mr. Sims is here, ask him if it's legal, if it's what you did, ask him if it's a violation of the Brown Act, because it is. What if somebody knows that the speaking on non-agenda items is at the end, and they come late? They're out in the cold now, and you've done a disservice. The correct way to do it is to have two periods of public communication about anything people want to talk to you about, so they can talk about the things you just voted on. Now, I met for, with, over an hour with Mr. Cantwell, I had a wonderful meeting with him, he has a wide breadth of knowledge across multiple areas, and I was very impressed, sir. Mr. Agakanyan, you made a comment at the first meeting of the year, you said you only want to hear positive comments at these meetings, I thought that was out of line. All of us have a right to come here to this podium and redress our elected officials, and learn the difference between redress and address, there's a difference, so I felt that that was a violation for you to make that statement. Now, I haven't forgot about you, Ms. Weisberg, and all the things you said at the last meeting. I had made a comment that five police officers beat a man to death, and I equated that to poor education and poor training, and you suggested that I was saying that the teachers here were responsible. I wasn't suggesting it, I was saying it. If teachers here or anywhere in the country advance students that don't have the knowledge, that can't pass the tests, you're doing them a disservice. Do you understand what I'm saying? When you give, hand out a diploma, or advance somebody a grade who hasn't earned it, you're dumbing down America, and this is the employee pool we have to select from for these critical jobs, so let's be clear about that. You went on to mock me, Ms. Weisberg, for taking notes before a meeting, you saw me writing notes down about different agenda, go back and watch the video and see what you said, okay? You did mock me, and when I said that you worked at a school, Sierra Canyon, and they charged $45,000 a year for, per student, per year, I was pointing out the fact that we are a public school system, we don't get that kind of money, $45,000 per year per student, okay? That's what I was talking about, and you mocked me for that as well. And then you did something that was a really poor example, beyond the previous two examples. You mispronounced my name purposely, you called me Sloshburger. Now, I put up that with a year, for a year with Ms. Tabit, of calling me Sloshburg, a year she couldn't get my name right, and I wondered, does she think that all Jewish people end in burg? I wondered, I mean, that's what it really called for, because you had my name written down in front of you, and you just continued to do it. Now, I didn't make a big deal out of it, I accept her, but I expect more from you, and when you did it purposely, that was a form of bullying. I'm calling you out for bullying me, for making fun of my name. You did it purposely, not accidentally. Now, I've said, I've pronounced some of your names wrong, and I apologize promptly when I do, that's not my style to do that, but it was your style, and you set the example for everybody watching you, and I expect more from you than making fun of my name, so get it right in the future, would you please? Schlossman. Now, if you want to clarify your name, is it Weisberg or Weissburg? I'll endeavor to get it right every single time, but please extend the same courtesy to me, you smug woman.
Okay. Next speaker is Katie Gonzalez, followed by Tracy Sorenson. Come on, Dan.
I want one. Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Katie Gonzalez, I teach at Jefferson, and I have taught there for seven years. I love my job, and I love the Burbank community. I just had one thought that I just been really on my heart that I wanted to share. My husband is also a teacher, and he teaches about 15 miles from Burbank, and he makes significantly more than I do, and I have a master's degree, and he does not. I feel that something has to give, or more teachers will be going 15 miles from Burbank for better pay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tracy Sorenson, followed by Diana Abasta.
Good evening, President Ferguson, school board members, Dr. Hill, and everyone else. My name is Tracy Sorenson, I am a second grade teacher at Thomas Jefferson, and the elementary director for BTA. To begin, I would like to thank you in advance for reinstating PE for third, fourth, and fifth grade for the next two years, assuming that you will find money to make this permanent. For Jefferson, I would also like to thank you for realizing that we need a vice principal, and help is on the way. Tonight, I would like to remind you that BUSD teachers are significantly underpaid. We work hard and are more than devoted to our students. The price of everything is going up, up, up. Our healthcare benefits are subpar. I worry about our futures. It is time to show your appreciation and significantly raise our salaries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Diana Abasta, followed by Melissa Walden.
Good evening, President Ferguson, members of the Board of Ed, Superintendent Hill, members of the district and community. My name is Diana Abasta, and I'm an English teacher at Burbank High School and the president of the Burbank Teachers Association. I know I will be repeating what you're going to hear more of tonight, but times change, and even when progress is made, each month educators, like my colleagues you see here today, face more challenges. Some of these challenges cause upheaval and add stress to their lives. To walk in our shoes means you must have courage, stamina, empathy, knowledge, patience, and a love for public education. Yet in spite of all, our teachers, our counselors, our nurses, and speech and language pathologists continue to work diligently to meet the needs of our students, even in times when the demands are great and the expectations unrealistic for anyone human to meet. Our members deserve to be compensated adequately for their time, their work, their expertise. Our working environment is our students' learning environment. Right now, teachers are still dealing with heavy workloads, added responsibilities, and pressures. It isn't just about walking into a classroom and starting to teach, it's dealing with classrooms that are not clean daily, class sizes that are bigger, and filled with students who require more, emails that must be answered, and parent phone calls that need to be made. Besides being strong in content and current and methodologies and pedagogy, they must also provide social and emotional learning. It's about getting to know their students and recognizing their areas of strengths and weaknesses, it's about assessing, grading, and trying to provide the resources, whether it be in the classroom or outside. It's about trying to build relationships with parents so that together, we can ensure their child does not slip through the cracks. In some cases, it's about needing district support to work with parents who need help with their children. It is about needing district support to protect the integrity of instruction that we follow in state standards. We need adequate numbers of campus supervisors at our schools to help keep our students and staff safe. We take our safety, the safety of our students and staff seriously, but we cannot possibly be everywhere at all times and teaching in the classroom. Our students must be expected to follow the rules and expectation as set forth in ed code and district policies. We need resources to address these habitual disruptions occurring in middle school, this is the second time I've brought this to your attention. There needs to be a setting where our middle school students can work in a smaller setting and get the services they need. Teachers must be able to follow their progressive discipline plans that include class suspension. Parent involvement and education when it comes to the home learning environment and discipline should be offered. All need to learn the value of good sportsmanship and exercise civility, even at this mic. All need to know and be reminded that in Burbank, we do not tolerate hate speech or derogatory language that is specifically intended to denigrate a person based on race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, religion, or any other factors that cause a group to be marginalized. We deserve to work in a positive working environment, free from threats and bullying. We all want BUSD to be the number one quality place for public education and for employment. We want to provide our students with the best, highly qualified teachers, counselors, speech and language pathologists, and nurses, but you must use the monies that we have received from the state and federal governments to bring salaries up. Other than the year 2000, and I've been at this for 42 years, this is the highest COLA we have received, we have over 11% of new, ongoing money, and if you are serious about retraining, retaining the teachers, and recruiting new teachers, you must look at what you value in the budget. We are not arguing facts, but we have to argue where you're going to put that money. A lot of districts around us have received double-digit raises. This makes it very difficult to recruit, and in the next few years, you're going to have a larger number of educators retiring. So we are appreciative, we thank you for the praise, but we need a raise that is going to make it feasible for us to stay in Burbank. We cannot support a healthy learning environment if we are not being given time, adequate resources to do our job, affordable health benefits, and a competitive salary. We have many vacant positions in SPED, and SPED teachers and SLP need that time to give their students quality service. They need time to prepare meetings with parents, consult with other service providers, and the truth is, the money saved by compensating these teachers, counselors, speech and language pathologists, and nurses from the beginning will save you so much more and would vastly reduce the turnover rate we have now. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Our next speaker is Melissa Walden, followed by Zach Doyle.
How do I follow that? Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Melissa Walden, and I work at John Muir Middle School, I'm a special education teacher, and Diana had a lot to say that I was like, yes, yes, that's exactly what I was going to say, so I'm going to keep it short. I spoke last year about my position, and all of our position as far as like secondary teachers, we have a position where it's case management and we have SDC, so we do both, those are two positions in one, and so I'm asking for that second period for an IEP case management period and the planning period, because we do both, and we don't have enough time. We are working way beyond the 40 hours per week that is allotted. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Zach Doyle, followed by Ryan Baker.
Good evening. Good evening, board, do you remember, do you mind if I lower my mask? Fantastic. I'm also going to take a second to shake out the nerves.
There you go.
Good evening, board, and thank you so much for the continued communication opportunity that you provide the members of our district to discuss the thoughts and concerns we have for our community. I wanted to take the time to connect with each of you, as I have not had the opportunity to meet any of you in person. I've been at BUSD for five years, and I've been teaching first grade for three. I began as a substitute, I've worked as a behavioral aide, a tutor, a swim coach, a reading interventionist, amongst the infinite other responsibilities that were asked for as educators. Burbank is where I began my professional journey. I had the privilege of learning the ropes from our very own Emily Phoenix and Julie Barnhart, first and fifth grade respectively, and I know that BUSD was my district. It gave me the vibes that I had from my own childhood district that I had when I was growing up, and I knew that this is the place that I wanted to be. I've also had the opportunity intermittently to coach the Burbank High School swim team as they prepared to get their new mainstream coaches, and it's no secret that I love working with kiddos. It's why I'm here, and it's why we're all here. I've spent the last two weeks receiving pitches from numerous seasoned educators as to why my voice is necessary at this meeting, and the truth is, it was a tad disheartening to hear so many wonderful, masterful, tenured teachers express the same thoughts and opinions of our future that have sometimes seemingly been pushed aside. It would be amazing to sit here and just discuss the best teaching practices that we can give our kiddos, but unfortunately, we're here to fight for our wages, and that's why I'm here today. I'm here in representation of the new and old generations that dedicate their life and time to their profession. The people in this room are all here for the betterment of the district and our community. It's been an honor, seriously, an honor, to meet all of you, and to create the best possible educational environment for our youth and our teachers, and that means higher wages, that means more FaceTime. I would love for all of you to come into my classroom and see what we do with the six and seven-year-olds. and seven-year-olds. And amongst everything else, love, 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 love. Thank you.
Can I ask where you teach?
Jefferson.
Thank you. I wonder if Jefferson's here tonight.
Zach.
Our next speaker is Ryan Baker, followed by Denise King.
Good evening, Board members and fellow union members. My name is Ryan Baker. I am currently a certified employee of the Burbank Unified School District through the Child Development Department, and I've been here for the last six years. I'm currently at Jefferson Elementary as well. Being that I work in child development, the Children's Center, as is probably more accurate, I feel as if I'm constantly battling to prove my worth. I see on many occasions how it's assumed that we are babysitters and not actual educators. I always say that if I were a babysitter, you could not afford me. And unfortunately, as a certified educator, the same is true. I can honestly say that my colleagues in the department work hard for these families and students that we love so dearly. I can not speak for them directly, but I can tell you that I spend countless hours in my classroom trying my hardest to make sure the environment for my students is safe, happy, healthy, productive, enriching, and educating. I currently have 29 wonderful students. That is 29 personalities that I manage. I care for their well-being, their mental health, the friendships they'll make. Are they happy? Do they feel safe? Will their lives somehow be made better by having gone through the program? I feel as if I spend more time in my classroom than my home. This includes after-hours and weekends, and I won't get into the amount of money that I've invested in my classroom and my students. Only $100 of that will be forgiven. It is not lost on parents how essential the childcare department is as well. Many of them would tell you that without the childcare services being offered in this district, more conveniently at the school site in which their child is enrolled, they couldn't work. Essentially, my work is never done, and I like it like that. That is why I find it very frustrating that I and a lot of the members behind me feel like we have to come to the table and beg for scraps. In my personal experience, I can only speak to the nature of three school districts in the state of California, and I must say Burbank is hands down the best one that I've worked for. The community is amazing. The teachers are talented. The principals are dedicated and care very much for their school environment. If all of this is true, why is it not shown through the compensation of our educators? Why are we met with excuses when it comes to the budget? Why are we told how much we're appreciated, yet a lot of our paychecks say otherwise? As my wise father says, "Show me, don't tell me." Is it too much to ask that the cost of living increase that we are entitled to each year actually cover the cost of living increases? Are we ungrateful for recognizing that these small incremental increases that were barely offered feel like a shot of adrenaline and not a step towards the solving of a systemic problem? Should I have to constantly knock on the door of my colleague and BTA president to devise strategies to up my wages? Knowing that it's an uphill battle where I'll again have to desperately prove my worth and probably be met with a hard no, I say now, the ball is in your court. I believe that you will all live up to the standard that has been set by the Burbank Unified School District. I really hope that you will not miss the moment because fortunately, or unfortunately for a lot of you, you're stuck with me. But there may come a day where a lot of educators in the district realize the joys of being an educator do not pay their bills and might look elsewhere or leave the profession altogether. I say again, do not miss this moment. Work with us. Help us. Show us you appreciate us. Thank you for your time.
Right now, the final card I have is for Denise King. If there are any other cards, please make them up before Ms. King wraps her comments. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Denise King, and I teach at Providenceia Elementary School. Go Panthers! I'm here today because my paycheck went down by $300 last month, January 2023. Happy New Year, you can't pay your family's cell phone plan. Currently, I'm only taking home 58% of my gross pay, and I don't even have a retirement plan like a 403B or a 401K. I'm not taking anything out, and I know that's a bad plan for my future, but unfortunately, I need all of my money right now for expenses. A few years ago, I was paying $800 a month for Kaiser, and then we learned about, when I learned about a new PPO that was only around $150 a month, I jumped on it. Now, that was an introductory rate, and we knew that, okay? We were told it would go up, but now, instead of $600 a month, which it was last year, which is a pretty big increase, it's now $900 a month. I didn't change anything on my end, but yet I'm making $300 less than I did in December. And I know many of you have a background in business. Does this sound like a good business sense to you? If your salary was going down after years of service, would you want to stay with that company? I teach math. This does not compute. My paycheck is inversely proportional to the cost of living. Again, does not compute. And with all of the extra that keeps getting piled on us, especially in elementary, with absolutely no planning time to do it, this is bananas to me. I've been teaching for 27 years, and I don't think you all have an idea of how hard it is to be in the classroom right now with kids still coming off distance learning and all the behavior issues that go along with it every day is challenging, and we, the teachers, are just told to make it work, deal with it, put up with, you know, handle whatever is thrown at us. There's new program implementation, textbook adoption, and so much more, and we are people with lives outside of school. But for the last few years, you seem to have forgotten that. I'm tired of coming home from work every night just to get back to work in what should be my free time. A salary should never go backwards, and I'm sorry that costs are up, but if you have millions in reserve, it should not be coming out of my paycheck. I work way too hard, and it feels like a slap in the face. So, please, share the wealth. Share the wealth with the people that really deserve it. You have no idea how hard we work. Thank you for your time.
Are there any additional speakers who wish to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll close the period of public comment, and we'll go to staff for staff responses. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Ferguson, and thank you to all the speakers tonight, and thank you to all of our BTA members for coming here tonight. I know it's been a long day already. I also know several speakers says you don't want to just hear our appreciation, but I still want to give you my appreciation for all that you do and for coming down here tonight. I got an update this afternoon that we had a very good negotiation session today. We were looking at two articles. Compensation was not one yet, but I know we have another meeting scheduled on March 3, and hopefully, we can start discussing compensation, but I really appreciate everyone bringing their stories and their testimonials tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. We'll go to Board colleagues for their responses, starting with Ms. Tabit.
I'm trying to figure out how to word this best. It means so much to see a packed room and folks coming to a board meeting because I hear you. It's important what you do every day that when you show up to your classrooms, your kids have many expectations of you, your parents have many expectations, admin, on and on and on, and so to come here tonight after a full day shows how dedicated and needed you are. So, thank you for taking the time out of your free time, as I think Denise put it. Appreciate that and appreciate your commitment to your craft for what you want to produce every year. So, thank you, and I hope that negotiations do flow in all of the things that you've asked for tonight. I can't, you know, see one reason why it shouldn't. If long as the numbers line up, we should be able to do something better for our dedicated employees, so let's hope that happens. Was there? Nope, I think I'm going to keep it really short tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tabit. Ms. Pons for Kamkar.
Thank you. So, again, it is great to see so many folks here. Mr. Doyle, I think you're right. Vibes don't pay the bills, even if they're good vibes. And I said it last time, and I think it's still true, that up here, we're aligned, and we want to be fighting with you on these things. We know that there is a structural problem in terms of the amount of revenue that we receive, and there are a number of ways that we can attack that, and we need to be working on that together, and those are the conversations that I've been having when I'm not here. It is, as Mr. Baker said, a systemic problem. So, I do think we need to build a, we have to build a coalition together to increase our revenue sustainably and long-term. I think there are likely, it sounds like the conversations are going really well, and I want to see that continue, but long-term, we know we've got a problem that we need to work on together. I had the opportunity of being in a school after the last board meeting. I was over at Washington Elementary for Art Day, and I just want to shout out to Principal Vineyard for inviting me. I saw K-2 classrooms engaging in really rigorous academic vocabulary and several artistic media. I saw watercolor. I saw acrylic. I saw oil pastels, and I think when I went in, Principal Vineyard was sharing with me that she had a school tour coming up for prospective parents, and what I always encourage people to do when they are looking at schools is to go visit our schools. They are truly amazing, and what we're doing with our young people is awesome, and I was really heartened to see that. The other thing that I want to bring up is I attended a couple of other meetings over the last couple of weeks, and I just want to thank the folks coming for the El Cap meeting. Thank you, Mr. Cantwell, for wherever he went. Oh, he's back there. I just can't see him. For facilitating and for members of the public for asking really thoughtful questions and for following up, and a lot of the questions were around this revenue issue that we're seeing. The other one was the DI parent meeting, and so there was really great turnout for this meeting, and I was glad to be there as a DI parent and also as a board member to hear those concerns for the program. But I think the high level is like, it's really exciting to see teachers here. I really want to get into some more classrooms because every time I do, I'm just really impressed with what I see, and so thank you, but I don't want you to have to pay your bills with vibes.
Thank you. Corcoranian.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, every morning when I drop off our son and pick him up later, you know, not only I see all the hard work that's going on, but also, you know, from the German who always has a big smile on at Miller when he's letting the students cross, no matter how cold the weather is or it's raining or not, and he always has a smile on. Larry Nelson, right? Is that who it is? Good, I should say hello to him. Also, the fact that our son is, he just loves the school, doesn't want to leave, you know, which is a good thing, you know, he stays there, and, but also, the after-school program and working with, you know, with the teachers. And every day when I comes and I drive him home, I ask him what you've learned today. So, he had a math test today. Shout out to our math teachers. But I do agree with all of you and what you're talking about, and I know that my colleagues have talked about this. I've always been about making sure that we do take care of our teachers, but at the same time, you know, experiencing it on daily basis as a parent, it really warms my heart that you're here. This is a big challenge. I'm happy that the state is moving in the right direction, looking at legislation to change wages in accordance to cost of living, because the reality of it is, you know, what's happening right now with inflation and everything else, it's just been hurting all the families. My hope is that, you know, you talked about insurance. Well, guess what? Our insurance commissioner is going to be in town soon doing a little workshop with our senator. Maybe you should go and raise these concerns. But at the same time, I'm glad that finally, the legislators are understanding that this is a big issue, and I'm glad you're bringing this up because we also have the ability to bring forward these conversations to our lawmakers to make sure that once and for all, as my colleague says and one of our teachers said, we address this systematic issue. But I can tell you that we're here for you. We hear you, and, you know, and thank you again. I know you don't want to hear this, but I want to thank you again for all you do because it warms my heart when our son comes home and all he talks about is his teachers and how much he loves to be at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody, to Katie, Tracy, Ms. Abasta, Melissa, Zach, Ryan, and Denise. I think pretty much everybody knows that I'm also a teacher. I teach seventh and eighth grade history, and I think, and that was truly the reason that I ran. I feel like, and still feel like, it is unbelievably important to have an educator sitting on the school board who does understand what it feels like to go home and continue to work and then get up and continue to work and then go home and continue to work. So, Denise, you talked about how it's so hard to understand how difficult it is to be in the classroom right now, and yes, I do teach at a fancy school, but it is still really difficult to be in the classroom right now. And one of the things that I'm constantly reminded of whenever everybody shows up is how lucky all of you are to be part of such a powerful union. That's not something that I have the benefit of, and I feel that acutely every day, but I'm also just so moved to see the power and the unity and the passion that you speak with as a united union. I think it's so important. So, along with just saying that I was really excited to hear that the negotiations have started off super, super well, I wanted to share a little bit about the things that we are doing on our end. Dr. Agakonian mentioned it, but we are advocating really hard with our elected officials to address some of the systemic funding issues. So, Mr. Ferguson and I are going to be meeting with Carolyn or Senator Menjivar's staff very, very soon, always meeting with Senator Portantino and Assemblymember Friedman, and I bring this up because it's not often apparent what we're doing, you know, because we sit here and we say, "We hear you and we respect you and we appreciate you," and all of those things are true, but we are also working our butts off behind the scenes to try to make systemic changes so you're not asking for scraps and that we can give you something substantial and meaningful. So, thinking about what we can do on the state level, thinking about how we can convince people not to give us money in restricted funds, but in fact, let the experts decide where the money should go, those things are really important. The switch from attendance to enrollment, all of these things are important, and we are constantly in conversation. We're really lucky and blessed to have elected officials who listen and take the time and are also really invested in education. So, we're doing that work. I know Dr. Hill is also doing that work. So, that's something that we are constantly trying to figure out how to address. So, I don't want it to sound like, you know, obviously, we can't talk about negotiations. We're not part of the negotiation process, but what I can tell you is, the level of appreciation we have, we are trying our best every day to advocate, to make connections, and to make a change so it's not the same conversation every time, because I know how horrible it feels to work as hard as you do and then ask to be paid a livable wage. It's disheartening. It's dehumanizing. It's exhausting. So, please know that we are continuously working behind the scenes. I hope that you will continue to reach out to us. I got a lot of really wonderful emails this week, and I know it takes a long time to write them, so I'm appreciative of those, but please keep reaching out to us, and I know that, you know, a lot of what we say does sound empty, but we're trying to make it as full as we possibly can with the tools that we have, and we know that sometimes it's just not enough. But it's not because we aren't invested or we're not unified. We are, or that we're not working every opportunity we get to try to make changes on both our level and also on the state level, because I think we all know unless we make some changes higher up, this is going to be the conversation we all have. And hopefully, another thing that we'll be able to work on is getting our community to invest in our school district the way that surrounding communities have, whether it's a parcel tax or a bond or whatever it is. One of the things that's so difficult, we know that Burbank is Burbank because of our One of the things that's so difficult, we know that Burbank is Burbank because of our school district. People move here because of the district. People stay here because of the district. So we need people to also support the district. And when you look around and you point to other districts and you say, "Well, these teachers make more," and yeah, they do, and that's partially because the community has said, "We value public education so much, we're willing to invest in it." And that's something that we also are thinking about and trying to figure out, how do we get our community to see how vastly important it is to invest in our district? Because Burbank is not Burbank without you. So that's something else that we're thinking about. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what we're doing, not just what we're saying. Zach, Mr. Doyle, I don't know where you are, I can't see anything. I see your hand, sir. Thank you so much, and I want to say, I want to apologize for not meeting you yet. One of the, I love teaching more than anything in the entire world, but one of the problems with teaching is that I work the same hours as you do. So I get a couple of grading days every year, and I'm always on-site. I've gotten to almost every school, and I will make it a priority to come. The best times are getting to sit in on the classrooms and meet with teachers and tour and see all of the reasons why we do this. So I think I do speak for all of us. Most of us up here work full-time jobs, not as an excuse, but as a clarification. If you don't see us, it's because we're doing our other jobs, and then we're gonna, then we try to get to everything we possibly can. Speaking of that, I wanted to thank Allison Edge. So this is the second year I've been able to help out with the NAF Academy mock interviews. If you haven't had a chance to do this, it's awesome. I've interviewed one student so far. They do mock interviews to learn interview skills and job skills, and so I have two other students, but it's amazing what they're doing in that academy is phenomenal. So if you get an opportunity to participate, it's not a lot of time, but a big impact. So I wanted to thank Ms. Edge for allowing me to be part of that again. And again, to thank everybody for what they shared. And maybe we can, and I would say, maybe we can do, not maybe, I think we can do a better job of communicating to you the things we're working on behind the scenes to address your concerns. We shouldn't have to say, "Oh, by the way, did you know?" You should know, we should be telling you. So I want to commit to doing a better job of making sure you know the advocacy that we're performing every day, not just at board meetings. So thank you to everybody.
Mr. President, a point of order, where is this?
This is not the time for that.
Well, this is a problem.
This is not the time.
This conversation is not on the agenda.
Excuse me, this is not, this is your first warning. There is, as I explained at the beginning of the meeting, there is a period of public comment where the public is able to participate, then it is our time to respond. We have had this conversation separately as well, Mr. Schlossman, where I have asked you to not yell out in the middle of the meeting. So there is no such thing as a point of order in this meeting. I will come to you, I promise to respond to you, but that's not the example we're gonna be setting for our kids. Are your comments?
I am.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. To all of our teachers and staff represented by BTA who are here tonight, thank you for taking the time to come down. There are so many areas to do work in, we hear that. And for all the campuses that are represented today, thank you for turning out, and thank you for helping us to kind of understand a little bit more of what you're dealing with. Some of these themes are recurring, but they don't fall on deaf ears. It exhausts me to think about your daily workday, and then on top of it, the other expectations that both we convey and the community conveys, parents convey, it's unreal. And I have and will always continue to be an advocate for all of you in our own ways. And I think what we've seen in time as a board, though, also, is a real move to advocate like never before, because we realize these compensation questions are so much more of a crisis than we're talking about as a state and in a number of different ways. We have this fine balance that we have to kind of navigate with a state with funding that is as volatile as it is. A lot of the state funding that comes in is as a result of capital gains. So when the stock market is doing well, California's doing well. Why? A lot of tech investment from especially Northern California. When the stock market turns, those gains drop dramatically, and so does the tax revenue that comes with it. And as a result, the state will do very drastic maneuvers in an effort to correct any kind of financial problems that are happening. What we've seen is, and what we're getting and hearing, is that there could be some economic slowing down, coming down. And so we have to then take that data and that information that we're receiving against our total reserve balance and decide just how much we want to invest, or we can invest at this time. That feels, in a lot of situations, very inhuman, and it doesn't feel like it takes care of people fundamentally. But what I can say is that we are all invested in getting every dollar that we possibly can into your pocket. We are also invested in trying to do it as quickly as possible, so that the county doesn't slow down payment options, things like that. We are very much committed to that. To our bargaining teams that are talking right now, love to hear on the progress that has been made, all very, very good. And as we get to other items, I hope those conversations continue, because I think both sides are trying to get money in pockets as quickly as possible through this negotiation process. To the specific commentary, you know, going 15 miles, a mile away, making more money, that is real, Burbank, and that is a big challenge for us as a school district when it comes to recruitment and retention. And we, as a community, have tried, and over 60% in both situations have said that they are willing to tax themselves more in order to ensure compensation is present in a way that can help us retain teachers. Unfortunately, that was not enough of a threshold. We did not meet enough of a threshold for the parcel tax to pass. So we are looking, as that has now gone to the Supreme Court, I mean, again, from legislation to generating local revenue, we are shaking every tree, to looking genuinely at efficiencies, because what we don't want to do is provide a raise and then, two years later, be in a layoff situation. Now, that's used by many districts to scare and intimidate negotiating teams away from asking for what their members need. That's not what we're saying, but it is something that we're navigating, that we have very real, I have been here through layoffs, and it's a terrible day to vote on those things. You feel responsible, not just for the livelihoods that you are impacting, but for the kids who have developed relationships with those teachers and employees. So all of this is taken very seriously. And so, thank you again for all you do on behalf of all of us, and certainly, we will work as aggressively as possible to address the systemic issues in the long-term, and where we can address short-term problems, let's get them done, let's get them out of the way, so that way you guys can get back to doing the things you love. To Mr. Doyle, I love your energy, and I just so appreciate that. And if it didn't come across in TV land, let me just tell you, we're lucky with that kind of energy in the classroom. And I know there's a lot of enthusiasm all around and a lot of great energy, but just, it really came through. So looking forward to finding a time where we can set up a visit with you. To Mr. Baker, you know, we're happy to be stuck with you.
Yes, we are.
Clearly. We're happy to be stuck with you. And with childcare being as challenging as it is, quality childcare, that is another layer to this crisis, right? And then here comes Burbank Unified to solve that problem. False. There's a lot of different government agencies that need to be chiming in, but instead, it's put on us, and then we've got to figure out, again, how to make you also, in the eyes of the public, more than just a babysitter, because there is so much more training and experience, frankly, that you have that, as a result, doesn't get deployed, doesn't get activated. So we're happy to be stuck with you. We're happy to be stuck with somebody who cares enough, and I'm sorry that it feels like scraps. It is scraps. And we are doing all we can, you know, I'm not gonna gaslight anybody, this is scraps. And so we do all we can to make sure they are as fatty scraps as we can pass, but we've got a lot of work to do as a state, to acknowledge the work of educators, to acknowledge the work of classified employees, and for the state's spending plan to represent our values as a people. So thank you, in the meantime. To Mr. Schlossman. The two periods of public comment that exist, first are for agenda items, and the second is for non-agenda items. To consolidate, because there were a lot of people who wanted to talk on a broad range of subjects, we consolidated it so that everybody who wanted to speak in the beginning could speak and then go home. We will take another period of public comment at the end and allow for another period of public comment in case anybody wants to come down at the end. The board is having a retreat this Saturday. We are discussing potentially changes to the agenda at that time. So I want to let you know, because we've communicated on this, that this may change in future conversation. But for now, we will have an additional period of public comment at the end, for any member of the public who wishes to come down and address the board on any agenda item. Okey-dokey? Okay. With that, thank you, everybody, for coming down tonight. We appreciate you, we appreciate your time, and thanks for taking care of our kiddos. We're gonna let the room clear a little bit. It won't be a song and dance, but we'll keep you moving. Good to see you, Ms. Hunter. Now that we've opened a second period of public comment, I will let the members of the public at home know, we have plenty of seating.
Come on down.
We welcome you.
Thank you.
Our viewership just dropped by 100%, you know.
If you're here and I'm here, whoever's here, who's watching?
Winston.
Wait.
Winston is watching.
If no one is watching, it doesn't even happen?
Yes. Okay, with that, we are gonna keep moving through the agenda items. We will move to Item 10, Reports to the Board. Item 10A, District Demographer Presentation by Trustee Area Map Development and Criteria Under the California Voting Rights Act.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and staff. And Doug just leaned over and said, "Jeez, I thought they were staying for us." And I was gonna say, "I love Jefferson," just to hear the woo! Thanks, Andy. While he's doing that, I do want to say, I'm Ken Chalkins. I first want to thank Andy and Ruthie, who've been great over these past couple of weeks, just getting the stuff together, making sure we're getting stuff on the website, getting the outreach done. It's not as easy as it looks, as you know, but they've been great, so. All right, so what I'm supposed to do here is go through something that was virtually the same as what we did last time. I looked at the agenda, then the public hearing is a little bit later. So I'll go through this, happy to entertain any questions you have. This is basically framing the rules of the road. First thing we have up there is a little bit more detailed than last time, but you can see the flow of what we're trying to do here. We had the first meeting, this is the second public hearing. These are intended to get feedback from you all and from members of the public. There's a submission deadline in March 3, and we need to get those, any maps that are drawn by March 3, after the community forums end by the 3rd, so that we can bring those to the next board meeting that we have. You have two more community forums, or four. You can see them there, some are in person and some are online. And then you have the meetings in March, the next two public hearings, and then you have the submission deadline, and by May 4, we're supposed to be making a selection. I wish I could say that that was the end of it, it then has to go to the county, and the county has to approve it, and that's subject to their schedule. So we're gonna fit in those public meetings and your public hearings, that's a significant amount of outreach, get as much feedback as we can. We will draw maps, the public, if they choose to, will draw maps. We will then treat those maps, bring them to you, so that you can look at them, and then it's up to you to sift through those and make decisions. This is the foundation of what we're talking about here, the column particularly on the left, the federal laws. The first is the equal population. That simply means it's a one-person, one-vote. Districts have to be as close as possible to the same size. And when you do this every decade, as you know, with population shift and things change, sometimes they get a lot out of whack, and so you have to redraw the lines. You have to draw them from zero, but they have to be as close as possible to the same size. You will see, when we get to map-making, how this makes a difference, because you'll say, "Well, we want to take into a community, but certain districts might be bigger that way, and so you have to carve and shape to get them the same size." The next two, I actually think, is a really interesting play. The Federal Voting Rights Act really says that you are not allowed to draw lines that dilute the potential for a protected class to elect somebody. It's dilute the potential, it doesn't guarantee anything. And so you can't draw anything that moves through or clearly says we're diluting the potential. The third one, though, no racial gerrymandering. You can't also be seen as, in a circuitous way, going to capture a certain population so that you are creating a district. So there are kind of two different parts of the same question, and you'll see, as we go through this, you'll get a feel for it. It's not as easy as some people think, that people just say, "Oh, gerrymandering," and it's not as easy just to draw a line. But again, you can't dilute, but you also can't purposefully go and grab it in a circuitous way. On the right-hand side, you're gonna see those areas, those principles that people or jurisdictions have used in the past. As I mentioned last time, this phrase "communities of interest" is really a term of art, and it's most important for you to define what that community of interest is. As long as you call it out in your public and you say, "This is what we were trying to do," it's important to create that record, so anybody looking back says, "Oh, I get a sense of what the board was trying to do." You try and keep district as compact as you can and as contiguous. We want districts that are touching. This may not be as much of an issue in Burbank, in some jurisdictions it really is. Natural boundaries, streets, natural or person-made, streets or mountains or streams or whatever. And voters' choices, that won't be an issue here as far as the lines, but it might be an issue as far as the terms. And so you're gonna also have to determine who goes up first, and the sequence of those elections, you don't want to upend somebody who elected someone here for four years and say, "By drawing a line, it cuts off their term." You try, we try our hardest to create both lines, but also the sequence that allows people who elected you to keep you for as long as they elected you. So that's what that means, really, respect the voter's choice. Plan future growth, Andy and I had a chat about this before. If you're really aware, not just like there's kind of a plan, but shovels are in ground and things are moving, and you know there's 5,000 units going on, and with Rena coming down from the state of California, you don't know what's gonna happen, but if you do know, you can under-populate that district a little bit, knowing that in 10 years, people are gonna come in, again, as long as you call it out and say, "This is why we did this." I would caution against doing that, just because you think there's gonna be some growth somewhere. Last one's minimize voter shifted to different election years. That's similar to the respect voters' choices, and the core of existing areas, you don't have that just yet. That's just a short list. You can come up with however much you want, you're gonna see now the demographics that we've called out for you. If you take the full, I want to note this, this is not voters and this is not citizens, this is residents. That number at the top there is 107,000 people who live in this district. You divide that by five and you get 21,510. That's the number we're trying, if all things are perfect, each of you would have a district that has that many people. You try and keep it within a difference of 10% plus and minus, to keep it as, that's the number we're targeting for, you try and get to zero as best you can, zero difference as far as that. All those, by the way, there's a lot more categories and there's a lot more detail, but you can see some of the things that would allow you to think about a community of interest. I know, President Ferguson, you mentioned the issue about renters last time, we could pull that out, certainly. And if it's something that you all agree is important to create a community of interest in renters, by all means. That's getting a little trickier these days with long-term rentals, short-term rentals, Airbnb and all that, but it's important that we can call that out and keep that in mind when we draw a district. As we noted last time, the Latino population doesn't have a particular concentration, a little bit around the airport, the freeway corridors, you can see. Asian-American, African-American, there's not a lot of concentration. I did want to get to the next slide, if it'll go. We did call out, last time we didn't have this, but we were able to find this and find the number, and you can see in the northeast corner, there's a lot more blue there. Again, it doesn't mean you draw a circle and draw a district, it doesn't happen. It doesn't happen just like that. It's something that you can take into account and say, there potentially is a community of interest here, and we may want to have a district that doesn't dilute the potential of that district to elect somebody. Does that make sense? That one, we didn't have last time. We did this last time, children at home, Spanish-speaking, household income. You can use wealth as a community of interest. Renters, as you mentioned, President Ferguson, and multifamily housing. I would say, too, sometimes communities of interest, you can say, let's get them into one so that they represent a community. You could also say, maybe they want to be part of two different districts, so that they have two members of the Board to go to. You have to sort of grapple with what that feels like and what makes sense to you. All of it revolves around you defining what is important. You'll see on the next slide, clearly, attendance zones are an issue for school boards, different perhaps than what city councils or county supervisors would think about. You all know where the schools are, and you can use that as a way to determine how to draw lines. Again, the foundational or fundamental element here is the districts have to be almost the same size. They have to be, that's the key thing here. And so you want to draw your lines with communities of interest and all the other things, but you want to keep districts the same size. I just did this all through the presentation. When we go to the community forums, we really, really emphasize, stop looking at the map for a moment, stop looking at the paper for a moment, tell me where you work and play, tell me where you exist, tell me where your communities are. It's not often geography. Sometimes it's a roads and a stream, but it's also where we shop and where we play. It's not just physical stuff. And if you ask the questions, people will give it to you, then we can start to draw a little bit more refined. You have a couple of tools on your website now. The first things I would notice, I would note, there are different tools for different purposes. The review draft maps tool is really cool. It's not to draw a map, but once we get maps up, you can really, really zoom in and out. You can call in an address, and you can say, show me where this is, what district and what map, et cetera. It's a very, very effective and very easy-to-use tool. You also have two other ones. One is a paper map, where if people are just not comfortable with the technology, you can print it out, and it's connected to an Excel spreadsheet. You can draw the lines around it. The spreadsheet does the math for you. You need to do the math, because again, you're trying to get things that are even. So you could draw something, do the math, and it's a piece of paper. It's an Excel spreadsheet connected to a piece of paper. You could also, as that last little part says in the bottom, we prefer not to get it on a napkin, but if you just have something that's important to you, whether it's a map or an area or whatever, and you want to submit it to the city, submit it. It doesn't mean that it won't be, it doesn't mean it'll be a map, but it'll mean, it means that we are getting input. We're getting input from people about what they care about and where they want lines drawn. And then the last one is, here, I'll actually show it to you. This is the simple map drawing tool. That's what it looks like. It's actually a lot of work to make all those little rectangles in there, but the map spits out that, and then you draw your lines around it, if you want to work with paper. And then, secondly, there's something called DRA or Dave's Redistricting Map. It's a relatively easy software to go in, and you can click and draw and paint and move things around. And then the key here is for anybody, when you tell people, you have to submit it to the district. Don't send it to me, don't send it to you, send it to the district, because the district gets it, we get it, we treat it, and then we present it back to you the way it looks. Okay? I think that's the public hearing after this presentation. We do want to have a conversation with you about what you care about and where your communities are, as well as any members of the public. And we're going to do virtually the same thing of this, probably a little bit more condensed, at the public meetings. Happy to answer any questions. That's your website. It's up. The phone number, Andy didn't want his home phone number, so we put the district up, and Ruthie has her email there. Any questions?
Do we want to do questions now or do the public hearing and then do the questions? Let's do the public hearing and then we'll move to questions. That way, we can also ask any follow-up questions if members of the public have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for making a very dense report, very concise. Appreciate it, because there's a lot of, you know, there are a lot of questions with this, there are a lot of new things to understand, and so we are doing our best to try and consolidate these presentations, make sure that they are informative but not overwhelming, as we try and educate members of the public. So thank you for working with us on that. I think that that's critically important. And then, from there, let me see, it is 8:15, so we can move to the public hearing. So with that, I will open, we will move, without objections from my colleagues, we will move to Item 11A, the Second Public Hearing Regarding Potential Composition of Trustee Areas Prior to the Drawing of Maps Pursuant to Election Code Section 10010, Subdivision, Section A, Part 1. The Board of Education will conduct a public hearing, so with that, the public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to address the Board on this issue? I have one individual, Ms.
Are we allowed to ask questions? Or no?
If you want to do it through public comment, if you want to do it through public comment, you can ask your questions up here, and then they can respond.
Okay, so that's when I would do it?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, now?
Yes.
Ready, set, go.
This is your moment.
Diana Bass, forgive my ignorance, it's just that I'm just wondering, how long would this stay in place? So two years from now, if I decide I want to contact the city because I think it needs to be redistrict for, so I just wanted to know how long, once you do this, how long is it in place? And maybe just a little bit about the why. Why are we doing this? That's all.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you so much. Do we want to get?
That was public comment.
Yeah. We'll invite you back up to answer those two questions if possible.
Let's try it again. Jefferson Elementary. There we go. I just wanted to see if that worked. These are in place for 10 years. It's done traditionally in between census, because that's when we count everybody, and that's when we make those decisions based on population shift. So this map will be in place until the next census. You might ask then, why are we doing this in the middle of a census period in 2023? And that gets to your second question. Why? The California Voting Rights Act is an act that was passed, Doug, what year, please?
2001.
No.
2002.
2002. It created an environment that allowed folks to come to places that had at-large elections and challenged them as districts that were not allowing for potential election of protected classes, to sue those jurisdictions, both school districts, mosquito abatement district, any kind of elected district you have. And if you lose the suit as the jurisdiction, you not only lose all the money you used to try to defend yourself, you have to pay the lawyer's fees, the legal fees for the other side. To this, to date, there are a number of 12, 15, 16 jurisdictions, school districts, cities, whatever, that have tried to, and none of them have won. There is one that is, the City of Santa Monica is at the Supreme Court. Supreme Court? I'm asking Doug. Yes. But it's gone back and forth in appeal, but nobody has won in defending themselves. So jurisdictions such as yours either react to a letter that is served that says to you, we're going to sue you if you don't, or they just look at the tea leaves and say, we need to do this because it's coming. Or they just do it because they think it's the right thing to do. But that's, the answer to your question is, that's why Burbank Unified is doing that now as opposed to waiting for the census. It'll be in place until 2031. In other words, you do the census, they got to count it, then you look, and then we go through this process again. Yep.
Okay. Questions from my colleagues. Doc, we'll start with Mr. Huerta.
Doctor Huerta one day. Oh, fingers crossed, that is the hope. Just a quick question, just with, love the information, especially after taking AP Government. I know what these terms mean, so that's even better. But going on to public hearings, the website, just, you know, obviously Burbank is, has such diverse demographics, seeing the map that has been presented. Just my question is, I think this probably might be a question for you or probably more for the district, but just towards translation or that own place, is our website have that option of translation, that phone number? Are there people at the ready to go for translation, especially the communication within our own BUSD of communication? I say this because I think of my lovely mother, who only speaks Spanish and who is not tech-savvy, so I'm always checking her emails, and I try and translate, and obviously, the little professional legal terms in Spanish that I know usually don't go around, and she thinks it's another thing, and I'm like, wait, no, I just messed up. So I just, how is that happening? How is that going on? And then especially when we are in person for the community hearings, will there be translators available, or will we have to have participants who want to translate email beforehand to have translator presence? And if so, how can we make that more accessible within our own community, especially, just noting myself, especially within the Latino community, because I've worked registrations at different schools, and many parents don't know how to print out the papers, don't check out their emails, and just on that case. So how, how will that be addressed and how we can have even more further participation within something so important like this?
That's an excellent question, from the district perspective.
We've talked about it being a huge priority from jump. So if you look at the website that's already up, you can translate it into like a bajillion languages, including Espanol. I was like, where's Spanish? And then it says Espanol.
Bajillion is a technical term, by the way.
Yes. So absolutely, yes. And I think Mr. Campbell can probably speak to, we were actually emailing back and forth today about accessibility and how we can make sure that as many people as possible can attend, knowing that there are limitations with childcare and you name it. So it's something that's a huge priority. We've talked about it at length already. I don't know if Mr. Campbell can speak to the question about making sure that there's translators, but it's a huge priority for all of us. Sorry on the spot.
Yeah, so again, we have been discussing participation and inclusion as a significant priority, and so that's one of the reasons that we're doing in person as well as Zoom. We're doing them in the morning, in the evening, we're doing them on the weekend, weekdays, and translation will be a part of that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other Board member questions? Dr. Weiss, were you on?
He was first.
Okay.
Sort of a comment question, which is that one of the things that we talked about the last time you were here is how important it's going to be to clarify that while, and again, this kind of speaks to the why, but that while people are voting by district, that we still serve at large. And I think that most people are not going to assume that. So looking at the website, for example, I really appreciated the note that said this process will not affect where any student attends school. I think it's important to add there also the understanding that we still serve at large, because it's going to scare people to think, oh, you know, who's going to be taking care of my school or who isn't? So I think the more that we can, anything that we put up, release, discuss, say that that is clarified, so that everybody knows that we serve at large, we're just elected by district.
We can integrate that into.
That would be fantastic. So more of a, like a statement-y thingy, but I do think it's going to be arguably one of the most confusing things for everybody, and still confusing for me a little bit. I also think it will be helpful to include, and maybe it's less important but still important, for people to understand what that means for their elected Board members. So like, do I have to go vote again for everybody in 2024? Like, do I, we know the answers to that, but I think as much as we can be transparent as far as how this is going to impact people, I think the better. So the first thing to me is far more important, but I also think people will want to know, like, what does this mean for electing school board members, didn't we just go through an election? But for me, the first thing is like the most important, and then just clarifying for people too, just the process, I think.
You'll be elected by district but governing at large.
Yes.
And we'll make a point of that in the presentation.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And if we can do it on the website, too, I think that would be really helpful.
Excellent. Ms. Ponsor Campar?
I have one kind of technical question, which is, on the calendar piece, there's a deadline for maps for Board consideration on the 16th, but not for the 20th. Like, when are those going to be due to, just, and maybe you don't need to answer now, but just to like clarify that we've got kind of two map deadlines, and maybe I'm misreading it, but I don't see another map deadline. I see the final one.
For the April 20th.
For the April 20th meeting. April 7th? Okay, cool.
And that has to do with getting them in the packets for you all.
Right, right, right. Okay.
We traditionally have that, whatever your protocol is, and then we need enough time to get the maps, process them, and put them together, put them in a deck and all that stuff. But it's mostly driven by your internal process.
Yep. And I bring that up because the first community forum isn't until after the submission date for the first set of maps, and so I want to make sure that after the, all of these community forums, we're still able to take maps from folks. And then I, you'll have to forgive me, I was trying to do a bit of multitasking, looking at the website, because I hadn't seen the website yet. And I would just encourage us, like, it's not, when we're doing these forums, like really doing kind of a walkthrough of like, here is how you find BUSD's map and how you draw those maps, like whether it's even just like doing a screen share that we can share on YouTube or something like that, I think would be tremendously helpful. Because, you know, I got signed up, and then I was like, well, where's my map? So.
You got signed up through Dave's.
I did.
Okay, so that's, and there's a video that should be there as well. But you got signed up through Dave's, so you get an account, basically. And then you can go in and you click and you start to draw, but you want to then see the district of Burbank that gives you the outlines, and then you got to start clicking and drawing and all that stuff. We can do both written conversations, written instructions, and there's a video. And then when we go to the community, to the extent that we can show people, we will.
Awesome. Great. I think that's all I have.
Ms. Tabit first, and then we'll go to you.
You want to hear this, Dr. Weiss, because I'm going to compliment you on what, right? You can pay me later. No. What you said was so succinct, and I appreciate it, that that message does get out there, that we are voted in by a population, and all the populations are equal in number, as opposed to conversation before representing a school, area, or boundary. Yes, I get that. So I'm so happy that you said that so well and that we're all on the same page, so to speak, which also I would prefer, because I think it's less confusing for the general population, and I don't even know if this is something that we get a say-so in, but I think the city's going through the same thing, and if it's by the numbers, that it would make sense to have the same voting population boundaries, because it's less confusing, in my opinion. And so those are my thoughts, and I'd like, I, just me, I haven't talked to any of you about this, would like to work closer with the city in designing these and getting input or seeing their input from their constituents that bring stuff in.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, yeah. If I may, I'll just comment on this one, just because I'm working more with the city and Ken's leading more with the school district. The city has a very confusing process, but is probably going to focus on a six-district map. They're going to, their plan, nothing's official yet, but what they talked about at council is putting on the ballot in March a charter measure that would change them to six council members and a citywide mayor, so that, just, you know, they may not line up. There will also be a five-district map drawn as a fallback, but.
So it's not a five district for the city with an out-at-large mayor?
It's right, because you have to, you have to have an odd number at the end. So they're, like I said, it's going to be a confusing process, because they're going to draw a five-district map, because they have to, and then for the ballot in March, they're going to draw a six-district plus one map. So it may be a little confusing to try coordinate the two.
But sure, they could always follow our map.
True.
That would be smarter.
So you need the math teacher to do five-sixths, and we draw, no, never mind, I'm kidding.
There you go.
By the way, it's, I did both the City of South Pasadena and the school district. And it's so attractive to do what you're trying to do, but when you start to hear what school district, school board members want and what city council people want, it is different, and it's because you've got these little things called schools in the middle. And like it or not, you do concern yourself with that. Small enough city like South Pass, it's not close, you can see kind of outlines. So my suggestion is to, if you're really interested, I would have you go to their outreach meetings, invite them to your outreach meetings. So if you're hearing similar things, then you're going to see the shapes are going to form themselves. are going to form themselves. But to try and sort of do an overlay, particularly with what Doug said, it's going to be really challenging. But I would, if you listen to it, you'll see the themes and they'll come out.
So, thank you. Any further questions? Okay. So I'm going to hop in. One, you know, I appreciate your, your comments, I think, in the spirit of efficiency and the spirit of, you know, cooperation and working together. I think it's always great to try and work with city partners where we can. I think that there are different considerations for each map. I think when you, I happen to work for a city council member who represents a district. And when you go through a redistricting process, you are looking at different things. We do not have, again, control over commercial corridors versus residential corridors and the impacts of businesses on residents. We are not elected to kind of answer those concerns. We are answered to answer really the educational needs of a community. And, and so as a result, I can see, for instance, that if they want to make sure that each council member has a portion of a commercial zone, or a good chunk of commercial properties that they can represent equitably across the board. Well, if you think about how our city is laid out, that's going to look differently than if you're considering a school that exists basically if you walk in any direction for about a mile. Those are very different maps. And so I think I support definitely working together to educate our community that we're going through this process. However, I also, you know, now hearing about this potential charter change, like, that's confusing as heck on top of everything else. I, first of all, I respect the city for having the conversation because I think we are big enough to have kind of these governance conversations, to review how we're governed and to consider new models after 100 years. I think that that's responsible. But when it comes to right now, navigating that, making sure those questions, comments, concerns don't bleed onto our maps potentially, I think that, you know, we owe it to the same constituencies we represent to really put forward maps that are going to take care of kids, first and foremost. And, and, you know, it may not be as convenient for, for folks, but if you look at any major community that is districted at this point, including as far as the city of Los Angeles, you know, again, the boundaries for LAUSD and the city of Los Angeles don't match entirely. Having said that, those lines cross all sorts of different ways. The other thing that's good about it is, is that when maps are drawn differently, when there are issues of potential collaboration, you could conceivably have two council members to work with on your issue because they represent the same school board district. And so it actually encourages greater participation with more members of the elected official. Whereas if our maps match exactly, then well, if you upset that council member, upset that school board member, you're out of luck until they leave office. I think that having maps that are different allow for things like that. So that's, that's where I'm going to continue to support education efforts where we can collaborate and get the word out that this map drawing process is occurring. But I don't support consolidating our outreach efforts. I don't support consolidating our input sessions. I don't support even putting our stuff on the same website, because I just think that it's, it's highly confusing. And I want to go at a pace that I believe, my belief, that the public can digest, understand and feel comfortable with. As it is, it's a very short timeline to be doing all this work. So that's just my considerations on that front. In your presentation, it says, what is your, there are a few communities of interest questions, things like that. And I just, you know, again, kind of want to reiterate where I certainly stand on that. Like, I think renters continue to be a community of interest. Why? Because I think that that allows us to demographically represent income levels of all, of the full spectrum. Geographic boundaries, I would say, you know, I have to say that I think Buena Vista represents a pretty big dividing line in our community. And ideally, I would love to see Buena Vista kind of respected. And then two bridge districts that, that kind of transcend our enrollment boundaries between Burbank, our two comprehensive high schools, Burbank High School and Burrows. And if you use kind of northern Buena Vista and cut it into the hillside, those foreseeably could be districts that represent both high schools. And so we don't set up for situations where board members are trying to push funding between the comprehensive high schools.
You're calling those bridge districts, so.
Bridge districts.
They go over and they capture, they capture one high school.
They capture both enrollment zones.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I mean.
Yes. So, I mean, after Buena Vista would likely be the five freeway as a divider geographically, but trying to respect as much of Buena Vista and then using, you know, potentially the, the density of the hillside to have two bridge districts, at least, you know, one to two bridge districts, I think would be good. And reducing the conflict while we supplement with other kind of bylaw changes and things like that. So that way, again, as Ms. Tabit has said, and then as Dr. Weisberg reiterated today, you know, that we are working towards a common mission of, of funding and supporting all schools, even though we represent districts. So that, that's important to me. All of the identified communities that have been previously identified, you know, I think those are continued communities of interest. But I would say just geographically, Buena Vista seems to be a good dividing line to start some of that work in breaking up. And I think that would also make sure that we could, you know, potentially look at districts for the Armenian-American community, potentially look at districts that, where there's density with the Latino population as well. And again, kind of respect those. So.
I just want to comment. I'm seeing heads nod. I want to, is that, is that?
Absolutely agree.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, but I hear it clearly and I wrote it down. I just want to make sure I'm seeing the, the board go like this. So, okay. Well, that's okay. Please.
So I have a question in regards of demographics. So, you know, Armenian-Americans are considered Caucasian, but, and that has been a challenge. Glendale is a great testament. They did the redistricting and two of the prominent Armenian communities end up losing their representatives at the school board sites. And so there's kind of been this mixed bag of, you know, representation. And to a point where some of the members of the community have been really vocal, kind of have said, you know, we're not, we don't, we're not interested anymore. We're tired of this whole process. It was bad enough, they divided the city into half Glendale after the redistricting, when you have now, right, two representatives in Assembly side alone, one of the few cities that is kind of was impacted. But just based on my observation, what I'm seeing, this has not worked well for certain communities who get, get to, tend to get confused in the whole Caucasian, you know, process. What has been your overall experience with communities like what I just?
Well, I'm going to let Doug speak. But I would say to you, we didn't, we at first thought we weren't going to be able to delineate the Armenian community because of what you said, because the census hadn't counted them as well. Subsequent to the last meeting, we were able to do that. And so it sort of takes out the issue you're talking about. That's why we have the map that shows where the concentration in the Northeast. And I would say, by the way, Board Member Tabit, that if the city is looking at the same map, the numbers are going to be the same numbers. And so to the extent that they're concerned with, and you mentioned last time, President Ferguson, you have a mayor and a president who are both renters. If those become guiding forces, guess what? Those districts are going to sort of find themselves close enough. But to the Armenian question, I think it, it's there on the map. The numbers are there. The experience that you just mentioned where jurisdictions are split in an assembly seat, when you do this, you try as hard as heck not to do that. You try and stay away from splitting jurisdictions. It's one of the principles that you use. Sometimes it's very difficult to do because of the numbers you're trying to balance. And so the only thing I take, it's, it's, it's not easy. It's not an issue here because you have one big jurisdiction. And for the Armenian community, I would, again, the population is pretty clear in the Northeast.
Which is also very heavy renter and identity.
So you may have one. And again, that may be a case where you want to try and create two if you can. But you remember those three principles. You don't want a gerrymander. You don't want to be, you know, going around like this. So you'll see it as it comes up. But we can do that.
And my other question is based on your experience. I understand people, you know, some of my colleagues brought up the concerns about, yeah, we're here voting as a, right? But also when you're district, right, you also have to be kind of tending your district needs. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. It makes it complicated. It's like, do I represent? Yeah, we're here. It's like Congress. I'm representing the interest of the people, but I have to represent the interest of my community. We're kind of doing the mini version of this, right? And that tends to sometimes also confuse people, but also, so I think it's very important, you know, that, that the boundaries are, you know, I mean, it gets complicated. No matter what we do, I always tell them, this is a complex process. No one, not everyone's going to be happy about it. And it will draw people more attention to their little area because you want to get reelected, right? You want to concentrate on that area, right? Unfortunately, that's part of the problem.
Well, and that's also why I think we've talked about potential governance reforms and things like that, to protect from that. Because inevitably, there's going to be a political component of looking out for the district that elects you. Inevitably, that's the case. But with smart governance decisions, changes in policies, for instance, again, raising the vote threshold from four to four out of five instead of three out of five to kind of exclude funding from a, or to take away funding. I think things like that are smart. And, and again, how we draw this map, I think ultimately will, will help us avoid some of those challenges. Just to be real. Because the more we draw it in, frankly, you know, to protect everyone, the more likely it is that that's all the interest will ever be. So that's why I suggested Buena Vista, because it will break up, frankly, some of the enrollment boundaries and pull in both enrollment boundaries at that portion, not just on the high school level, but also on the middle school level, and, and really create a cross pollination where everybody's kind of having to look after everybody.
Yeah. And just to, I mean, I'm sure I'm being a little Pollyanna about this, but I really do think that as hard as we can to resist the sort of political machinations that often get involved in this, and help our community understand that if we're doing our job, what's best for the district is going to be what's best for our districts. So I know that so much of this, you know, so much of people's anxiety is wrapped up in like, what if I get drawn in the same district as another board member? And that is a concern for people who run for office. But I also, like, I believe, and I think that this board is capable of focusing and helping our, our BUSD community understand that when we, when we become districted, while we will, I'm sure, all spend some specific amount of time at our, our specific school locations, we're going to be working for the good of the district as a whole. And so I don't want to have this convert, this sort of narrative come up of, but of course, naturally, we're just going to care about our schools. I don't think it has to be that. I think we have to push back against that ourselves as people who are, ran for school board to represent all of BUSD. And, you know, if we do a good job of governance, well, people will get reelected. So I don't even, I think it's important to like, that we as a board are really clear about the language we use when we talk about this, which is to say, like, we recognize that there's anxiety about how this is going to be. But again, our job is to represent all the districts. We know that there's some, you know, there'll be some natural care and tending to the district that you're put into. But I think we can push back against that narrative. And I think it's important that we do. Because I do believe, and again, maybe I'm being ridiculous, but I do believe that, that that is what we will do. Or I hope that's what we will do.
You know, I, one second. I will say that I am going to be meeting with Glendale School Board President Nairi Nahabedian next week. They represent trustee areas. And one of the questions I'm talking to her about is how do you continue that? How do you continue that working for everybody? They have strategies for that. So I want to be able to learn that and bring some of that back. But with that, Ms. Ponsor Campcar.
Thank you. So I think we can, we can hold both things where when we are sitting up here, we are representing and advocating for the full district and also being held accountable to an individual set of voters. Right now, we get emails to all five board members, and it's not clear who's going to be held accountable for answering to those individual constituents. And, you know, as a voter, I kind of like having one person that I could go and say, this is my problem. Help me fix it. And do some of that kind of like constituent service, constituent stewarding that maybe isn't happening because the, the accountability is diffuse right now. And I don't think that that's a negative thing. I think it holds us accountable to actually serving our community.
Dr. Aga Khanian, then Ms. Tabit.
And I do agree with my colleagues. And I think, you know, I always brag about our board, our united we are and how well we work together, you know? But I'm also a complex system thinker, I think, in five and 10-year increments down the road. And that is a concern of mine for the next generation. So I think if we set the tone properly, I think that'll be fine. But again, just based on my observation and certain communities that this is not, the intentions are well, and I know why this was brought forward, the whole lawsuits and everything. But I think we have to be very careful also how we carry the message, because it's not sitting well with certain communities who feel like they're kind of being pushed out of the whole process. And I think, I think, I think it's important that we're very, very clear on what, how we're representing this. And I think the city, I know that, you know, we want to keep this separate, but at the same time, that also impacts. Because a lot of these individuals also, even with renters, there are communities who were here two years ago, they're completely moved on because rent has gone up, right? There are certain voting blocks who don't, you know, are come and go, and that tends to be challenging. We know what some of those areas are. But at the same time, I think it is important that, that we make sure that everyone participates and they're not kind of pushed away because they didn't see this work in other districts, as well as some of the members of those communities hoped. But I think this board, I think we can carry this forward in a positive manner. But.
Great. So far, so good. Ms. Tabit.
So I think, from what I've heard, please don't be offended in any way, shape or form. It's just a conversation. You, maybe what you said in the beginning is not what I'm hearing you say now.
No, it's the same thing.
Well, so it's based on population primarily with, yeah, with a few other things put in. But I keep hearing dividing areas so that schools are represented in a fairly even way. But our goal is not to represent a school, only to be voted in by an area. And I think, while maybe we might be able to work together to see the whole picture when we make decisions, I think Dr. Aga Khanian is correct that maybe four, six, 10 years down the line, that's not the case any longer. I just really want to keep the focus, if, because we have to go this way now, I really want to keep the focus based on dividing those lines by populations, plural, not just numbers, but, you know, however else that has to be. And not necessarily the focus on representing schools. I think that leads us down a rabbit hole that we don't want to be. We then become.
Yeah.
We all of Pasadena.
So, and my specific feedback around, you know, kind of use, trying to create these bridge districts is, again, geographically, a comprehensive high school, which is a major population, student population, may or may not be in your physical district. But if you have, if your district overlays two enrollment boundaries for two different middle schools, for instance, and one of those middle schools feeds into one of the high schools, and another middle school feeds into another, that board member now has a vested interest in making sure both pathways are taken care of, because otherwise they're going to hear from their constituents. So that's where I'm talking about using boundaries, geographic and otherwise, to purposefully layer the considerations of every board member so that you don't have that kind of protectionism, that kind of, you know, this is my turf, I'm only going to look out for my turf. We are complicating our lives intentionally by making sure that, you know, you can't cut, that no board member should be able to cut out a school from their consideration.
Right. We're going to get mad at them.
We'll see. So there you go. Yeah. So with, Ms. Ponsor Campcar.
I just want to, as we're looking at this outreach plan, I think it's great. I think I'm, I'm really excited to see that we've got multiple ways of doing it. I did see the Disney PTA at least bring this up at the last PTA meeting, that like, this is something that's coming. This is something that we need to care about. I would love to see that kind of engagement with the rest of our groups that like to do this kind of work and like to do this kind of outreach, right? Whether it's, whether it's the PTA or otherwise. And so just a real shout out to my Disney PTA. But also, I imagine, I hope that it's happening elsewhere as well to get them engaged.
I will say, I was at the PTA council meeting. So the school board president traditionally attends the PTA council meeting, which has representatives of all the units there. And I did an announcement about redistricting there. So, yeah, made it through. So it was high level with, you know, but I'm really happy to hear that individual units are taking this on. So again, if. So again, if, if units have the capacity and time and want to be able to put this on, I think units are a great group that could, that could facilitate presentations. I, you know, I worry a little bit beyond going, or going beyond that. So booster groups, parent groups, parent organizations. When we start getting into these advocacy organizations, potentially running them, that's where I think, you know, it becomes a little complicated of who gets what, why do we pick one advocacy org over another? And I think that's where we get into some trouble. But, but completely aligned on especially our parent leaders and making sure that they're briefed. Okeydoke. Any additional questions on this front?
Any other communities you want to highlight?
Except for the ones that were reinforced already.
That's good.
No, what he said.
Just one data note. The question, the Armenians came up, just so people are aware, the census has proposed changing our categories for 2030. So there will not be a separate Latino question. Right now, there's that weird, are you Latino? Yes, no, that'll just be another choice. And they will, they are proposing, it's not finally yet, but they're proposing a Middle Eastern and North African category, which would cover Armenians down in El Cajon, it would get the Iraqis and all the.
You know, it is challenging.
Running on geopolitical lines.
No, no, no. I think, yeah, so.
I'm fully, it's, as far as you can get, I'm fully aware.
Yeah.
All the differences.
Informationally, I think that's really helpful for consideration, because we can only use census data.
Exactly.
And that's what's the, yes, we completely understand, and, you know, I relate, my friend. So, you know, absolutely. So I, one, and to answer Dr. Aga Khanian's commentary a little bit on this, you know, I want to make sure, this, this time, we've received what we've received, which has triggered this process, which now we're going. I think one of the areas for potential cooperation with the city long term is after this process, potentially creating an independent redistricting process that's prescribed by the charter that will allow greater time and preparation for this to occur. So you don't have elected leaders necessarily drawing the lines, and people can apply, as the other commissions have been, the county commission in particular, that drew supervisory lines, I think was extremely successful as a model potentially for outreach and things like that. So there's, there's a number of models here, but I think in terms of what you're saying, in terms of Ms. Tabit's concerns, I think that there, that this is only the beginning of the work that we need to do as a team. And I think the next steps look like, how do we do this in an independent fashion? How do we do this, you know, and again, not just start the year before in 2030, but how do we start in 2029? Get the conversations going so that way we're fully prepped and we're not on these consolidated timelines anymore. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to item 10B, report on the advanced placement program. And that will be done by Dr. Pramo.
Good evening, Board President Ferguson, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff and community. I have the honor and fun of sharing with you the data and the progress of our students in 2022, who were involved in the advanced placement program. So the first slide I have is a high-level profile by site of our students who participated in advanced placement. You can see that the data is provided to you longitudinally, and you can see four years' worth of data. By school site, it will show you how many AP students we had enrolled in AP classes, the number of exams that were taken that year, and our pass rate. So a pass rate is, passing score is a score of three or higher, so a three, a four, or a five. So I do want to point out, if you look at the data and you look at 2022 and the number of AP students, you can see that there is a little bit of a decrease, especially if you look at it in comparison to 2019. So I want to talk a little bit about that. In that, in that timeframe, we've also, you know, really produced a lot more dual enrollment classes, and these dual enrollment classes have become more popular and more kids are taking them. And some kids are taking them in lieu of an AP class because they're earning college credits, and that is a different avenue or path for kids to make it to college. So a lot of students are now looking at a different pathway. Maybe I'm going to earn enough college credits and be able to apply to the university as a junior, and, and maybe it's going to be a little bit easier to get into the school of choice that I want. In terms of number of AP exams, that number has gone down a little bit as well. So it must be several years ago that our district changed its policy, and we no longer require students to sit for the exam if they take an AP class. And so over time, we have seen that this is starting to decrease a little bit. I don't think this is all bad. So I could be an AP student who's challenging for AP classes because I really want my transcript to look good, I want to apply to UCLA, so I want that on my transcript. But when it comes down to taking the AP exams, maybe I'm only going to choose the two that I'm really strong in and not stress about taking all four, which is something that our counseling staff has been really deliberate and strategic in communicating with kids is not to overextend and find yourself in a position where you're feeling really anxious or stressed. I think our pass rate is solid 2022, and it's not statistically significant between these two schools. So I think our pass rate is actually very good. The next, it didn't advance, there it is. The next slide is looking at the data by demographic, and you can see our different subgroups and how they performed. Again, I look at those pass rates and feel like regardless of which demographic you look at, we have a pretty solid pass rate for our folks. We have more females taking exams than males, and the males are performing a little bit better. I don't think that's really statistically significant either, it's not by too much. And we had 408 exams taken by students who qualify for free and reduced lunch.
I just had a quick question about that, which is, so the percentages are good, clear across the board, but with the fee reduction, it's definitely the lowest percentage. I'm making an assumption here that students that receive fee reductions are probably also students who can't afford like prep classes and all the expensive bells and whistles that go with it. So do we, like, what or do we provide any additional supports for students who get the fee reduction, knowing that probably they're not going to be able to do the test prep in the way that other students will?
So the test prep they do have access to is through the college board, and the college board has tutorials and test-taking skills that they can actually utilize. Beyond that, what we have are prep books, test prep books that are in the library and accessible, and our city libraries have them as well. Depending on who your AP teacher is, they will hold study sessions, whether it's at lunch or after school. But you're right, there are fee-based programs that help kids to prep that we haven't really addressed.
And how do we let the kids know about all of those great resources that are in place?
So a lot of that is done by the school site via bulletin in the counseling, counselors either put tweets out, or they put in their bulletin announcements what resources are available.
Do they get sort of any of that information when they register?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer. I can look into that for you.
I'm sorry to like.
No, no, no. They're good questions.
Okay.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
I'll let you guys know.
Piggybacking on that just a little bit, because I think they're, they are great points, and we now have data demonstrating some backup to this. And, and so I think if we can investigate, so again, a prep session after school is a luxury that some students who aren't working, right, can go to, and those who have to work to contribute to their families, they aren't going to have access to that. So if we can potentially use this to explore online options that exist, whether it be in a hard kind of synchronous setting or an asynchronous setting, either work, but I think also if there are study groups, et cetera, that can be formed online, that may be more accessible at different times of the day, et cetera, you know? And really mapping it out, if you can study at eight o'clock at night, these are the options available to you. I think that that's kind of the user-friendly compassionate way of doing this, because I, you know, I know statistically, it's when we talk about the actual number of exams, but when we are talking about Hispanic students, they are 10% or 3%, okay? But with low-income students in particular, 65%, that's noticeable. And so at this point, we need to answer that. We've done some work on this to try and make sure people have access to taking these tests, but I think this is the kind of the next step of that, the next logical step.
Thank you. We will, I will definitely look into that.
And the college board does have online practice ones, so we'll just make sure that that's getting out to our students so that they can do that.
Thank you.
The next set of data is just to look at if we're capturing our English language learners. And you can see there, based on each school site, where we've had English language learners or reclassified students, and at what rate or what quantity, number of students that fall into each of those categories. And you can see that in comparison to our English-only students. Any questions about that? Next slide is just looking at our other major subgroup, which are our kids that have special needs or on the 504 plan, and you can see what the data is showing there. Not a lot in special ed, but a pretty significant number, a pretty healthy number in 504s. And again, you can see what our low-income, our low socioeconomic students and what they represent, the number of students they represent. So district-wide, where are our greatest areas of participation? This has not changed over the last several years, it's still US history, with 187 students in English language and composition, 176 in psychology, we had 169 students. Areas of strength is a little different for each school, but the data is really good, and it looks, it looks good. So at Burbank High School, 100% pass rate in computer science, a 95% pass rate in English Lit, and 88% in Spanish. At Burrows, 100% of Spanish language, 90 in statistics, 89 in both calculus and physics.
Ms. Tabit.
You know, the years fly by when you're having fun. The Spanish language at Burrows, is that the, those dual immersion students haven't reached that level yet? Okay.
I don't, have they actually gotten into Spanish language?
Some freshmen.
Right.
Got it. Was this, this year was the first year?
Yeah.
So the answer was some freshmen have come through the dual immersion program.
To start.
And I think the data from the meeting last week was that like 100% of the DI kids had passed the AP exam if they'd been passed into it, if they'd been, if they'd tested into it essentially. Am I getting that right, Ms. Cusio? Okay. It was pretty amazing data.
That's, yeah, that's.
For ninth graders.
Really phenomenal information.
Bringing it home, bringing it home after many years, bringing it home.
But then, what's next for those kids?
We have.
That's the big question, isn't it?
AP Spanish language, AP Spanish Lit.
Oh, yeah, this can, this is an adventure that keeps on giving, we can keep going.
Not so ironically, but areas of challenge for both schools is the same, and that is in the areas of physics and chemistry, 57% pass rate at BHS, 28% at Burrows, 62% pass rate in chemistry, 40% at Burrows. So these are the two areas that both schools, you know, can, we can, we can work there. We can see what we can do to help there. The chemistry test is statewide is not real great, so that's not an excuse for us to not try even harder, but that's what it shows across the state of California. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Tabit.
Once again, my memory, physics and chemistry teachers are hard to come by.
They are.
Yeah, I know, but we, we've done a really great job in making sure there's always a quality teacher in both of those areas. But I, if, you know, it's a lot in this head, there's been some turnover in those areas too.
That is correct.
That would probably greatly affect those students and those test scores as well.
Yes.
So I'm hoping we can find.
We're working on it.
Some, some folks are going to stick around to make sure that those, I can hear Mrs. Diane, or Mrs. Abasta's brain working over there. Yeah, that those are important things for students, so thank you.
No problem.
So thank you for your presentation. I think this is good news for the community to celebrate. So for, for the critics, you know, this is, these are hard tests that, again, require an entire year worth of study and testing and academic rigor in order to succeed in. So to all of our educators who are making this possible, and our support staff who are supporting students on this journey, thank you. On a few things, one, you know, just piggybacking on earlier comments, I think like the college board example is a great, a potential resources for students. I also am talking about platforms for them to organize themselves into study groups citywide. So I think the library has some tools on this front, but again, like, if there's a Burbank-wide study group, it's pretty clear, you know, if we're having physics problems in both schools, and if they could cross-collaborate with their teachers and set that up on their own via Zoom, that would be great, you know? And again, allow students to look at a calendar and go, I can attend a study group at that time, and that doesn't exclude me from participating, even if it's with friends from Burrows. Also creates cross-school interactions, which I like. So again, trying to identify potential software systems and platforms that we could deploy, I think is, is important. And then if we could dive deeper on the physics and chemistry, I, we have a responsibility to, because these, these are consistent numbers. You said, for instance, that this is a bad test, this is a hard test. I want, I want the public to understand that more, and it would also be good to potentially have in, and again, this is not an urgent report back, but the AP teachers themselves to kind of describe what the challenges are. Because, for instance, if there are answers that we could potentially identify in our business community through apprenticeships, right, and designing a pathway that involves more practical applications, because that's going to, you know, that's going to accomplish different learning outcomes, we should be doing that at this point. And it's been a rather consistent issue area, and again, not for a lack of effort, this is a standard across the state.
Correct.
But it allows us to do some outside the box thinking.
Hi.
Hey.
So a couple of clarifying questions. So when I look at the like number of students that are taking and passing the tests here, when I see something like for computer science, there's 26 kids at Burbank and two kids at JBS, does that mean that there's two classes going on, or there's one class at each school? Or are those Burrows kids coming to Burbank to take the course? Or what does that logistically look like?
So some areas of study are happening at one school and not the other.
Right.
Based on interest, and a lot of times, a lot of these courses are driven by a teacher, right?
Yeah.
So, for example, it's not just computer science, but AP French.
Yeah.
So we offer AP French at Burbank High, and it's not that we don't want to have it at Burrows, but we haven't built up that community, and there hasn't been that need. So when you look at that data, a student doesn't have to take a computer science course to take the exam. So a lot of times, a student may study on their own, or may have, be working with a teacher or tutor, and they're working through the prep book, and they're going to challenge a test. So we are, at this moment, working to beef up the program in computer science at John Burrows High School, and I feel like we're at those beginning stages where we're starting to get, creep up so that we can have a full-fledged dedicated class in AP computer science at Burrows. So there is a dedicated class at Burbank High School, and these two kids are kids that just challenged the test.
Amazing. Truly. So then my other question is somewhat related, which is, when we talk about dual enrollment, the dual enrollment courses, and this somewhat predates my time on the board, so how many, like, are those, are the ones you're seeing students taking, are they similar in terms of content area as AP tests? Are there ways for students who are taking like a dual enrollment history course to then take AP, the AP US history test, or whatever it is? And then I think my other piece for that is, my understanding is that all of the AP courses, you know, are A to D qualified?
Correct.
Is it the same for the dual enrollment courses?
Really good question. So I just sat in a meeting with Ms. Cusio and our CTE and dual enrollment folks to kind of look at course offerings. of look at course offerings. And so we started off with the ones that were popular, that kids were taking at the community college, like public speaking, public communication, Armenian classes. But they've expanded and we're looking at psychology classes, classes in counseling, which is a new one that has had a lot of interest this last year, and several others. Do you want to add to that or?
Yes. But the whole purpose of the dual enrollment program is so that they can get college credit and also start on their pathways. So one of the goals that we have with LA Valley College right now is to create enough courses that are general education, so transferable courses is the focus, so that the students can complete a year or more of college while still in high school. So that is what we're working on right now. So that means that naturally those courses, those transferable courses would also count as A through G.
And there's not a big correlation between the dual enrollment classes and existing like AP exams or classes?
One more thing as a side note, the AP courses are generally much harder.
And, yeah. You know, in, in the conversation about equity, we've talked about this for a long time. And, and I think that, you know, and again, just speaking on my own behalf, you know, I've always seen dual enrollment as the more equitable pathway. One, it ensures that you get college credit. In theory, a student could take an entire class and not pass the test and get no college credit. But because the weighted GPA impacts admissions, that's kind of this lingering factor that keeps AP classes, which I have to say also has a social emotional component, because these students are melting down to the point where at one time, I was trying to initiate, and I still think we should probably move forward to some level of this, an automatic trigger, that if you're going to take more than three conversations, that a conversation should be, should be had with school counselors and with all that support staff and a plan should be developed if that kiddo starts falling apart under all that pressure. We have heard and seen over years, students break down because of the caseload that they've taken on with these courses. So I personally would love to see APs completely phased out in the long term. Then we don't have to ask some students to pay for it and other students not to. We don't have to worry about some students and their access to college prep courses that cost hundreds, if not thousands of dollars to enroll in versus not. And in the long run, that would be great. But again, for that Harvard-bound student, if you take away AP classes right now, they are not competitive in that way. So I, I think that, you know, we've got to keep on the path that we're doing and, and building out dual enrollment, you know, one year, that's a great accomplishment. Eventually, let's get to two. You know, I, I think that's where we want to go. But, you know, just for members of the public, there's also a cost to this. As, as well as everybody's doing, it's a lot of work for everybody involved and, and there's a lot of impacts as a result. But either way, very solid numbers. Ms. Tabit.
I would be cautious in heading that direction until colleges and universities change how they look at students who are applying to come to their schools. You have to remember, at the end of the day, a college or university is a money-making facility. And so if you, if, if only everybody's coming in as a junior, they're not going, you know, because they have so many transferable units. If I take a dual enrollment class in history, it then works as a transfer units in history, which means I'm not taking that university's history class. Not so the case with AP classes. They could be used for any area and not always the ones that a, you know what I'm saying, that a college may be able to, you may take an AP history class, but that's, when you apply to college, that's not where those units are going. They may go to something else and you still have to go to that university and take their classes because they, at the end of the day, they want your money. So before we eliminate everything, and that's, I know that's not what you were saying, I'm making it bigger, we really need to make sure that our colleges are ready, willing to accept all those transferable units, so.
And, and I, I will say, I, I think, you know, I think we're in agreement. You know, I, I am not for phasing out AP tests at this time or AP classes at this time. If I would, I could, but I realize there's a lot of factors like that. I will say that I am not looking out for the bottom lines of colleges and universities. The, the community college system, the state schools in California, the University of California, you know, those are institutions designed fundamentally so that we as a society can progress. We want to create institutions of learning so that we can create complex problem solvers. And that is a public, that's a need, that's a necessity, that's a social good, and that is what keeps us competitive. Frankly, it keeps us as the superpower nation that we are, because we've invested in education. And people forget that, yeah, even your K-12 teachers, your K-12 classified employees, they're a part of that, that chain. So am I concerned, and you made another point, there are private colleges and universities who will demand for the sake of GPA that kids take six, seven AP classes in a single year, but will only honor and give college credit for one or two of those courses and not honor, even though they've earned college credit, and not honor the other courses. So again, I'm not for a private university, again, whether they name a hall after me or not, profiting on the backs of kids and making them frankly, short-circuit in high school, deny them their childhood years so that, you know, the bank balance is, is still there. Sorry, not sorry. So that, I, I heard what you're saying. I'm not saying that is adversarial. I'm just kind of addressing more of a systemic issue that I think really exists and it's just backwards. It's not kid-centric. The college board is a company. Let's, let's also, this is not some government agency. It's a company that produces the tests. And that test, as long as people are struggling on that test, guess what? They want to keep taking it to get better at it. So that way they can be absolved of the sins of not doing well. So I, I think it's a system that feeds itself and I'm just kind of offering that narrative to the public because I think we've done a really good job at starting to build out our dual enrollment pathways. And for those families who are facing challenges and obstacles to getting to a higher level of learning or who want to take their college tuition bill and cut it, there are ways and there are places for you that don't include, you know, stressing out and going nuts. So thank you so much.
Sure.
With that, we will continue on to item 10C, which is a report on facilities and technology projects. Mr. Cantwell. Throw it clear there?
President Ferguson, board members, colleagues. This evening, we have two facility and technology agenda items. They both are technology, they both are notice of completions. The first one was a project to convert fax lines to our VOIP, the Voice Over Internet Protocol Network. So it was just a conversion of our old fax lines to an updated software. The second notice of completion is for a project that took approximately eight months, replacement of our firewall, firewalls, just completed about two weeks ago. Do we have any questions?
Thanks to you and our, and our amazing tech team.
Thank you.
So thank you for the presentation. A part of the conversation that will be happening on Saturday, you know, this is a relatively short report. Having said that, you still have to create PowerPoint, staff reports, you name it. So a part of the conversation, you know, for Saturday is, do we want to continue having these presentations in the same way or to extend potentially, you know, do a time period every three months, have a presentation like this, et cetera? So I know these are brief reports. I know they can be somewhat painful at times to just kind of do on top of everything else you're doing. Having said that, the reason why we put these in place was originally Dr. Reynolds, we can blame her, you know, who, she's not here, so we can do that, but was to highlight bond spending. And so we have pretty much completed bond spending at this time. And so, you know, potentially kind of bringing it off the kind of repeat is a conversation for Saturday and just kind of, this is an example of that. So just thank you, Mr. Cantwell, for doing the report, but just wanted to kind of preview that. Any further conversations on this?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, we will keep moving on. We have already conducted item 11 and item 11A, which is the second public hearing on the composition of trustee areas. So we will move to item 12, which is new and, new and/or unfinished business. Item 12A, adoption of resolution 16 proclaiming March 2023 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt resolution 16 proclaiming March 2023 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month as presented.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian to adopt resolution 16. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. We'll have Ms., Dr. Weisberg read that.
Intellectual and developmental disabilities are disabilities characterized by significant limitations both in intellectual functioning, reasoning, learning, problem solving, and in adaptive behavior, which covers a range of everyday social and practical skills and typically appears before the age of 18. Whereas in 1987, President Ronald Reagan declared March to be Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas quality and effective programs can lead to significantly positive outcomes for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Whereas individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities often require a lifetime of specialized and community service, support services to ensure their health and safety and participation in the community. Whereas individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities are living and working in the community, pursuing higher education, developing their faith, falling in love and getting married, and making their voices heard in all aspects of life. Whereas Burbank Unified School District employs qualified and caring individuals who strive to support the education and lives of students with intellectual and developmental disabilities and support their families. Whereas Burbank Unified School District is dedicated to developing and sustaining programs and resources that support students with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families. Whereas March 2023 is designated as National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to increase public awareness of the need to support individuals and family members, educators, and other professionals who teach and care for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities to ensure they are respected, valued, and fully included in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby designates the month of March 2023 as National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. And we do celebrate all the privilege that it is to educate so many of this population and to support so many of these families. We are very, very lucky. We have a lot of work to do post-COVID, though, to help these families. And we are going to continue to bring that up as, as a part of our board conversations and to keep this population central as, as we all recover from this. So thank you to all of you for allowing us to educate your children. We are so lucky to be able to do so. Thank you, Dr. Weisberg, again. And then we will move on to item 12B, approval of comprehensive school safety plans.
I jumped the gun, I apologize.
Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Tabit.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve each school's 2023, 2024 comprehensive school safety plans as presented.
Moved by Ms. Tabit to approve the safety plan, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Any further discussion on this item?
I know it's a lot of work.
Yes, this is a ton of work. So thank you to all staff who have worked on this. You know, these are, these are very relevant documents, even though they are a state requirement. You know, some state requirements are just a lot of paperwork. This is both a lot of paperwork and a really important conversation to, so to our site councils, to everybody who has kind of participated in some level of this. Thank you. Any further questions on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. We'll move to item 12C, adoption of resolution number one concerning funding of child development programs for fiscal year 2023, 2024, which is contract number CCTR-2074.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt resolution number one concerning funding of child development programs for fiscal year 2023, 2024, contract number CCTR-2074 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian on this item. Do, do we want to discuss potential fees long-term? Is this a good time for that or another?
We're going to agendize that for a future board meeting.
Right, okay.
This, the item tonight is to give the authority to sign contracts for next school year.
Right.
We're reviewing our child development budget and going to be talking about, we've been increasing fees around 5%. We're looking at inflation marks and other factors. So we'll bring a, a future agenda item to talk about that.
Thank you. We had, we had talked about that in exec, so the, the financial status. So this is purely ministerial, but as that conversation kind of rotates through, I just wanted to make sure that board members are aware and the public is aware that that conversation is coming up. Okay, so I have read it, is there, was there a motion? I didn't get one.
Yes.
Dr. Weisberg, excuse me. Excuse me, sorry for spacing out on that front. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Onto item 12D, approval of the Aztec software licenses.
Okay, Mr. President.
Ms. Tabit.
I move the Board of Education approves the software licensing agreement between Burbank Unified School District, Burbank Adult School, and Aztec Software not to exceed $17,480, 50%. Oh, all those, there's a stream of, of.
Fun numbers.
Of numbers, right, that the money comes out of, effective February 17, 2023, and that the authority to sign the agreement by exercise pursuant to BUSD AR3314 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Any further discussion on this? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Onto item 12E, which is the 2023 California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly Election Subregion 23A. Traditionally, we vote on this one by one as candidates. If, I'm looking to my colleagues, there are two candidates for two seats. So I will just move that we cast ballots for both candidates who have submitted and asked for a second.
Second.
Moved by myself, seconded by, that's a little bit of presidential privilege right there, but just trying to move us along. Moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Weisberg and Dr. Aga Khanian.
A question, none of my colleagues are interested in putting their name in it? Because I, I'll be honest with this, with the CSBA, I mean, we have, I know that in the past, we have not been attending. I want to know where we are on that. It seems that some districts tend to be a little more active with the CSBA. And I know why the decisions were made in the past, but I didn't even know there was an election and, you know.
Yeah, I, I have to admit the amount of, so the filing period is closed for, for these specific, for these specific spaces. We can do a write-in candidate, we've done that before. Having said that, yeah, there we go. But I, I think if we could have staff keep an eye out for leadership elections, et cetera, you know, I will say it is a little concerning as GUSD has at least two board members, potentially it looks like that, that would be represented compared to smaller districts, San Gabriel. That's going to be a district that certainly has access to concentration grant funding, et cetera, and not necessarily facing the same financial challenges that we are, even though they are a smaller district or a medium-sized school district.
We can keep it five-star. Usually the CSBA rep is there, but she's been not there the last few months. So I, I will keep that going.
Okay. Dr. Aga Khanian.
Just out of curiosity, where are we on the, attending the annual, you know, conferences?
So we can have that conversation on Saturday. As a part of board member priorities, if that's a real, I, I think for instance, ongoing education, masters in governance courses, that's something that's great, but the question of costs every year for the convention, we should talk about that. If that's a priority for you, there's a time in the agenda, we can bring that up. And that may be helpful for you to talk about that and give background for Ms. Spencer, Cam, and others who haven't participated.
Well, because my concern is we're voting for some for CSBA, yet we're not, haven't been.
We're not participating.
Exactly.
And, and we stop participating out of financial concern. So there's a time on Saturday to talk about that again. So I think we'll, we'll figure that time out.
And then they didn't have it for a while because of COVID.
That's right, yeah. World shut down, reopened, we're all getting there. So okey-dokey. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. And will, to be continued to Saturday. Item 12F, right, yep. Memorandum of Understanding Between Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters and the Burbank Unified School District. Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we, hold on, I'm reading this. Approve the memorandum of understanding between the Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters and the Burbank Unified School District as presented.
Second. Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by myself to approve this partnership with the Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters. Thank you to the carpenters who, you know, this is a trade, but it is a well-paying trade and a necessary trade, especially with the amount of housing that needs to be built and developed, along with commercial properties in, in the state and the region. So huge partnerships, huge opportunities available and also strengthening our vocational pathways.
Absolutely.
And career pathways. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Onto item 12G. Onto Item 12G, Ms. Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson, I move that the Board of Education take formal action accepting the following gifts to the district, and that specifically, the Board President convey, convey his appreciation to the donors respectfully and with much appreciation as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, and seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian to, well, no, she said respectfully, yes.
I'm going to change it every week, see.
That's what I did. Catch up. Any further questions on the gift report? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero, and we will go through and thank the gifts. So on behalf of the Burbank Unified School District, we'd like to thank everybody for their contributions, big or small, but in particular, these donors tonight, to the Roosevelt Elementary PTA, who has donated $6,000 to be used for the Roosevelt Book Club, and the Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School, Go Rough Riders, to the Black Bud Giving Fund, which has donated $384.62 to be used as needed at McKinley Elementary School, we thank you for that, to Peter Lars Incorporated/Cornerstone Photography, who has donated $781.09 to be used as needed at McKinley Elementary School, thank you for that, Marlene Calvo Friar, who has donated $500 to be used for student enrichment at Magnolia Park School, a truly terrific campus in our district. E, and our final gift is Providencia PTA, who has donated $4,500 to be used for Gary, for the Gary Dance Program at Providencia Elementary School. No matter, again, how big or small, we really do appreciate the support for our schools. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar, and I'll take a motion.
Oh, back to me again.
Ms., Ms. Tabit.
I move that the Board approve the consent agenda, 13A through 13P, except those which my fellow board members wish to.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Are there any items that board members wish to pull?
No.
Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. With that, we have completed most of our agenda. As I said previously, we are going to do one additional period of public communication. I have one card for that, and that is for Mr. Schlossman.
Mr. President, I was lucky to have a kid that, in his AP classes, he was bored, you know, and he went through UCLA, and he was bored there, too. So that's just, I guess, that's just my kid. You know, tonight, we witnessed multiple Brown Act violations. I talked to Attorney Sims about it out in the hall, and he confirmed it, and, you know, all I ever ask for here is a level playing field. Most of the things that I talk about are two, are two things. I want you to educate our students better, and I want you to administer the business of the school district in a better fashion. I want you to be fiscally responsible. I don't think that's too much to ask. Largely, I don't agree with you on many things, particularly DEI and CRT, some of these things. But it's, it's, dissension is a good thing, you know, otherwise, it'd be kind of boring around here. And it's, it's my right to say things, it's everybody's right to say things that you don't agree with it. But we should have a level playing field. We didn't get it tonight. I go to a lot of these boards and commission meetings, I go to the city council, and I've received and witnessed a lot of Brown Act training. And I've seen the superintendent, when you veer off course, immediately correct you. Tonight, on, on 3B, you had a closed-session item regarding the Burbank Teachers Association. Yet each of you took turns going far beyond brief comments, which is what is allowed, and the superintendent didn't say anything, and you know it's wrong. Now, Ms. Sebastian asks, why are we going to districting? Well, from my perspective, I feel largely ignored here. Tonight doesn't count, because I, I really didn't ask any questions tonight, but many nights, I do ask questions, and they are ignored. And if I do get an answer, let's say, from the parcel tax, Mr. Hill says, well, I've already answered that. And from my perspective, if I ask that question in every meeting, please answer it at every meeting. Maybe I forgot the answer. And this is the types of things. I sent an email to Ms. Weisberg, I said, I'd like to meet with you, you can record the meeting, and you can bring somebody with you to the meeting. I want to talk about school business, I want to resolve our issues, and I'm ignored, not even a response. And I've, when you run, you say, you're great communicators, most recently, you, Ms. Tabit. And I've sent you emails, and I'm just ignored, you know, not even the courtesy of, no, thank you, nothing. And this is why I feel I need, we need districting. I want a representative that lives in my district. And it's, it was glossed over tonight, but some of you folks are going to be out of a job, because you have to live in the district that you represent. Now, I guess you could move, but when your term is up, if we ever districting, you're, you know, you're going to have to live in that district. Okay, so I talked to you about the DEI, CRT, telling us what books to read, I've disagreed with you on that. You witnessed a conspiracy happen here, and none of you said anything. Messrs. Paramo and Hill talked about me during a meeting on their private phones, and when I immediately asked for those text messages, I was denied, and I said, show me your phones, no. Mr. Paramo said, I immediately erase all of my text messages, and I found that to be disingenuous. And I'll bet if we looked at your phone right now, Mr. Paramo, we'd see some text messages.
Send them all to God.
Okay, thank you. But that's the wrong way to do it. If he's clearing out text messages on school business, he just admitted it, that he cleared out his messages, I'm talking, I've still got the time.
I understand, but you do need to address your comments through the board and through the chair.
I'm talking, I'm talking it to you.
I know.
Talking to you.
Now you are.
And the point of this districting is, nobody said, hey, don't do that again. It was a conspiracy, it was against the law, it was a violation of the Brown Act, and nobody said anything. So if we get districting, I'm hoping I'll get a representative that says, when people, you know, don't act appropriately, do it appropriately, and that's what I'm looking for. And I hope you all have a good evening, drive safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diana Abasta.
I'll just make this really brief. Next month, Read Across America, March 2nd, there wasn't anything here, and, you know, reading above all, so important. And I do understand that you all have jobs, but I also have to say that you took this position, you have a responsibility to visit the schools, and I'm not just talking about doing this as you wave by. I have had some of you come with me, sometimes I've had to, but please look at what it's like bell-to-bell. I know that I've taken Ms. Tabit and Superintendent Hill, so they can see what transitions look like. Like, do you know what goes into just, and I know you know, an hour, an hour lesson, and you have all these different, it's not even just personalities, it's, it's levels of ability. And, you know, when you're a teacher, you have to build a base, you have to have a base to remediate, and then you have to offer enrichment. And it's very difficult to do all of this when you have all the other added pressures and demands. Even today, I had a teacher come to me with a parent email. I have no words for that. Do you know how that destroys and demoralizes a teacher because we are being told we want this student to get this letter grade? We, we have got to open up, when we go to BUSD, this is what it means, this is what an education in BUSD means. This is what it means when our children come here. We have ethics here. We, we teach our young students responsibility and accountability. I, I know I'm going a little, and I do have other questions about redistricting, because I, I am concerned ethically about, yeah, and I know you, you already know that, but Read Across America. Tomorrow, I'm actually going to McKinley, and I will be observing TK, and then a kindergarten, and then a first grade, because I'm very interested to see how centers and small groups are done, because kindergarten is a lot, you know. I, I go in there, it makes me nervous when I'm in a kindergarten class, and, you know, people would say, you teach high school, but I love high school, and kindergarten, those teachers, wow. And, you know, you may not have seen all of that energy, and I was so glad to see Mr. Doyle come up here, Zach, he's, he is phenomenal, but those other people have this gravitas, this years of experience, I'm just, I'm like this when I go to watch them. So again, I am at McKinley, if anybody would want to join me, we are at PROV, we make the visits, and then we talk to our members, and we also go in and talk to our principals to see what can we do to be proactive. I think our principals need that mentorship, just as much, I, I mean, I truly wish I had a mentor. It doesn't matter how old you are, but to have that type of leadership, where you actually have that, that's something that I hope that we can continue to build on, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the period of public comment, we'll go to staff responses. None?
No response, just thank you both.
Thank you. Board member responses, Ms. Tabit.
Just one, Mr. Schlossman, I have not received an email from you. Please look through your emails, make sure it's Charlene Tabit at Burbank USD, T-A-B-E-T, and resend me your emails, because I haven't received one.
Okay. Thank you to all of our speakers, Read Across America, let's make sure to get information distributed to the board so we can best participate. To Mr. Schlossman, I will say, I, I trust that staff is doing from everything that they need to be doing to maintain appropriate records, and moving forward, you know, again, lesson learned, but it doesn't require persecution each and every time, and that's coming from me. So with that, it is.
Retirements.
The retirements, thank you so much. So I made a mistake in my first meeting, and I missed the retirements, which is really terrible, because I want and always have a very deep appreciation for these folks, and absolutely know some of these folks. So thank you for the shout-out to remind me, it just is kind of there, another thing for Saturday. But want to first begin by recognizing the retirement of Kenneth Brown, who is retiring from facilities, who began his service in May of 1990. Rosie Paris, who's an attendance technician at Burbank High School, who began her service to the district in 1996. Diane Sorenti, who is a serving kitchen operator, who began her service in September of 2008, to Gloria Mesa, who is a budget program technician.
Who was at Burbank High when I was a student.
Yes, who was a, who was at Burbank High when both Ms. Tabit and Steve Ferguson were students, who began her service, ready for this, October 1973.
Oh my gosh.
That one in particular is something that we may want to pull out and, and recognize separately, but what a commitment. Burbank hear this, when we're talking about our employees, 50 years of service to, to these kiddos, to these institutions. We don't do that without doing something right. So again, I'm just going to finish, and then to Leslie Hawa, who began her service in 2005. So really, truly, want to recognize, pull out Ms. Ma, I know we do the annual retirement gala, but I think it's important that we recognize her at a, at a different level for that lifetime of service to our kids. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, we will adjourn at 9:44. Thank you, everybody.